So, good morning, everybody. I want to welcome you to the November 16th, 2021 meeting of the Cowherd County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Hancock from Emmanuel Baptist Church, come forward and give us an invocation.
Good morning, Pastor.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much. Let's pray together. Father God, we're so thankful for the day, the gift of the day, the promise that it holds. Father, the task that you want us to accomplish, the relationships that you want us to build, Father. God, in a life, in a world that is so busy, a pace that is faster and faster, it is good to pause for a moment in this season, Lord, to remember our veterans and are so thankful, Lord, for their service, their sacrifice, their leadership in our nation, even in our own state and our county. Father, thank you for the families that stand beside them. Father, we're thankful that next week we'll pause to give thanks for all of the goodness and all of the blessings and all the joys that we have in life. And then, Lord, just a few weeks later, we'll pause again and just remember the value and the importance of your nearness in our life. And so, God, we are thankful today that we can slow down a bit, Lord, just to recognize you. Thank you for our county. Thank you for our commissioners. Lord, we ask that you give them wisdom and guidance and leadership. Lord, give them patience. Lord, give them the grit that is needed to serve our county well. Lord, thank you so much for our first responders, for our schools, Father, for those who serve so faithfully in our county. Now, Lord, we commit this time to you. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
A pleasure to meet you. To the flag of the United States of America, to live in a republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. So, the first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions? I believe there is a motion to be made.
Yes, sir. Sorry, Mr. President.
That's okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt and approve the agenda as submitting, but moving the work sessions prior to the presentations.
Second?
So, motion and second that we adjust the agenda and move work sessions ahead of presentations. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, the next item on the agenda is public service announcements. I just want to remind everybody that the Tuesday after Thanksgiving is Giving Tuesday, where we ask our citizens to donate to their favorite charities. So, we ask that you remember that as you get through your holidays and be ready for that. And as the board, we want to tell everyone how great we are, grateful we are for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Cowherd County, and a special thanks to all those who will be working and away from their families on Thanksgiving Day, especially our military, our police officers, our first responders, emergency dispatchers, and all the healthcare workers. You know, all those individuals that have to work when we all can take a day off and enjoy family and friends, they still have to work and provide services. So, we want to make sure we keep them in your prayers. And as always, if you're traveling, be safe. I think unless someone else has something, that concludes public service announcements. Next item on the agenda is consent. We have four items under consent. Department of Parks and Recreation, RMS Fitness Equipment Service Agreement. Item two, Department of Public Safety. Third Amendment to the Contract Between the Board of County Commissioners of Cowherd County and the American Towers LLC. Item three, Department of Finance and Budget Award Recommendation, ITB 2022-021, Critical Area Conservation Landscaping Project. Item four, Department of Public Works Budget Adjustment Number 033CIP. Are there any objections to the items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the consent agenda will be adopted. Next item is new business. Item one, Department of Public Safety. Director Vaughn, welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jackie Vaughn, Director of Public Safety.
Al Jeffrey, Deputy Director of Public Safety. Good morning, Commissioners. Today, we're here to request reorganization of the current public safety staffing. Background, with the implementation of Career Emergency Medical Services, SIMS, we have recently reviewed two current positions, the Emergency Medical Services Coordinator and the EMS Medical Director, which currently fall within the Fire Rescue EMS Division, FRMS. We request to realign both positions to better serve the Department of Public Safety as a whole. Discussion. Currently, the EMS Coordinator and EMS Medical Director positions are reflected in the FRMS budget and report directly to the division chief, to that division chief. This worked well prior to the development and implementation of SIMS and the creation of the Deputy Director of Public Safety position. These positions provide services to all EMS clinicians in the county, and having them report to and receive direction from two division chiefs would be confusing and could lead to conflicting communications. In order to address this and eliminate the possibility of any confusion, we request to realign these positions under the direct supervision of the Deputy Director of Public Safety. The Deputy Director has been assigned daily oversight of these divisions and will ensure common goals and objectives are communicated to all. If approved, the Department of Public Safety will coordinate with the Departments of Finance and Budget, Human Resources, Technology Services, and the FRMS Division to identify and transfer the existing approved FRMS fiscal year 22 budget for both positions to include salaries, overtime, equipment funding, conference and training, telephone, computer equipment, insurance for the EMS Medical Director into the public safety budget, Department of Public Safety budget. Fiscal impact. There is no fiscal impact as these positions and associated expenses are currently approved in the fiscal year 22 budget. Conclusions and recommendations, staff recommends the board approve the realignment of the current positions within the Department of Public Safety in order to better serve the department.
So, technically, what we're doing is just changing the organizational chart to reflect what you're already doing today.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Before, I was going to say, before we created Career EMS, they all, these two positions fell under the Fire Rescue EMS Division, which is the volunteer side of the house. So, these positions are positions that support both career and the volunteer side. So, we're just asking to realign them. So, they're not answering to different division chiefs. And actually, quite honestly, they support our emergency communications as well because we operate under the medical director's license for our emergency medical dispatch as well.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the realignment of the current positions within the Department of Public Safety in order to better serve the department.
Second.
So, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next item under new business, Department of Planning and Zoning. Director Cook.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. We're here today to talk about the results of the PAR sales. And Ron Marnie, our Environmental Planning Regulator, is going to walk us through the memo.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Background, the Board of County Commissioners established the Purchase and Retirement Fund in 1992 to purchase, retire, and permanently remove transferable development rights from the development rights market, thereby protecting additional farmland acres from development. This year, the Board of County Commissioners directed staff to establish a TDR bank pilot program that will be called the TDR Reserve. The TDR bank pilot program is a county-managed program that will facilitate TDR sales between farmers and developers and act as a revolving fund. There is a total of 2,451, or 2 million, I apologize, 2,451,675 dollars in the budget available for the PAR fund purchased in the TDR Reserve jointly. The funding includes a small portion of agricultural transfer tax dedicated to agricultural preservation totaling approximately 30,000. The remaining funds come from prior-year land preservation fund balances of approximately 1,500,000 and contributions from the County General Fund of 921,675 dollars. Discussion. On August 10th, 2021, the Board of County Commissioners approved a price of $4,500 per TDR for both the Reserve and the PAR program. The general fund contribution of 921,675 dollars was approved to serve as the budget for the TDR Reserve as previously approved by the Board of County Commissioners. This allocation of the general fund for the TDR Reserve is a one-time contribution intended to function as seed money for the pilot program. The remaining 1,530,000 dollars was attributed to the fiscal year 2022 PAR cycle. As part of the approval, the Board of County Commissioners directed staff to bring the PAR cycle back before the board to evaluate the level of participation. As of the end of the application period, which is October 29th, 2021, Cowherd County has received a total of eight complete applications which are eligible to participate in the PAR cycle. The applications cover a total of 178 TDRs, and at the current price would cost 801,000 dollars to purchase. Based on this, the balance of unused funds for the fiscal year 2022 PAR cycle would be 729,000 dollars. Fiscal impact. A maximum of 2,451,675 dollars is available between both the PAR and TDR Reserve and the fiscal year 2022 budget. Conclusion and recommendations, staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners consider the PAR participation and direct staff to process the received applications.
So, how many applications did you get? For how many TDRs?
Both those that actually qualified and were able to participate, eight. We had an additional seven that either literally had no TDRs to sell but still applied, or were not in compliance and therefore not eligible to participate.
And what was the total number of TDRs? I'm sorry.
It is 178.
178.
And just to note, we opened the TDR Reserve on November 1st. So, we're just getting applications for that new program now.
Are you hearing positive feedback?
I know that we had interest from one party that's planning to apply for.
I mean, granted, it's just getting started.
Right. Yeah, we sent postcards. So, people are just realizing that the program's out there. It's new.
You want a motion?
Commissioner, you sure? Commissioner Williams, did you have something to say?
Um, I did.
Okay.
Go ahead. All right.
All right, all right.
No, um, this year, we're always seeking the sweet spot on this number, 4,500. We received more this year than last year, I believe. Is that correct? Is that a true statement?
In terms of applications?
In terms of processing of applications and TDRs?
We actually probably have fewer this cycle.
Fewer this cycle?
Because the last cycle was actually extended due to the COVID pandemic. So, it was.
Okay.
It covered two fiscal years, basically.
Okay, okay. But I guess the question is, are we quantifying said sweet spot where we need to be? I guess that's the question, per se. And that's a lot to ask. That's a subjective question. So, that's my goal, though. So.
I think my response would be that we have, we do work diligently to try and make sure that we do hit that sweet spot. And that is done in conjunction with the Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board, which recommended the price that we have currently.
Right, right. Thank you, Ron.
So, we ever surveyed TDR owners to see why they don't sell?
I don't think we have, but we certainly can send out a survey letter to see.
Be nice to know.
Yeah.
I mean, I know, you know, I hear.
I'm sure they want the price higher.
Well, there are going to be those people, yeah, that say it's not enough, but it is, I believe it's a fair price. But I don't know what other issues are out there and why, because we have thousands of TDRs on the books. And every time we do an application cycle, we get less than 200 that are willing to sell, at least to us. So, if we just be, I just thought it'd be an interesting fact, if we queried, you know, what you have a, you know, and they maybe use them for settling estates or whatever, but it might be of interest and help us as we move forward. What is your reluctance? Because we did have a little conversation last week, I guess it was in the meeting, or maybe it was not, but about, we talked earlier about programs being frozen. This program's been frozen since 2015. And every year, we have money left over. And, you know, maybe we should look at, and I think you are, looking at how we could reopen the program and get people in that are willing to sell, you know. And that's a condition. We'll let you in, but you're going to sell them now at this price. That's how we let you in. And I know they're working on criteria of who we're going to let in, because it is, there is a limit to what we can take. So, you know, I think that's, if we're evaluating the program and how we move forward, that's one of our goals, is to figure out how we can get people in that are willing to sell and preserve their property and use up their, it's no, you know, the program, there's no benefit to carrying money over every year.
There isn't.
So, you know.
And I don't know if they feel the process is a little cumbersome, maybe. Who knows? You know, people are working all the time. They're super busy. They may say, you know, boy, it's a lot to, I don't know, maybe we need to streamline it some, you know.
And they have to hire an attorney and, you know.
Yeah, so when you know that's.
There's a lot of documents they have to provide.
When you're running a business, and that's what most of these folks are, they're running a business, or they're, you know, working, it's difficult. And so, maybe there's a way to streamline this a little bit.
So, if we do a survey and gather some information, maybe we can improve the process.
What do they need the attorney for?
For, go ahead, Ron.
The attorneys are only necessary for the conveyance process. They prepare the title package, which ensures the TDRs both exist and are free and clear of any encumbrances and therefore ready to sell.
And what does an attorney cost for to do something like that? Do you have any idea? That may be a hangup, maybe a hangup.
Like when you're settling a house, you know, they go and check, you know, the deed is clear and everything else.
Right.
I mean, it's going to be a few thousand dollars, I'm sure. So.
Right. But that comes out of their money.
Commissioner Gadway?
Yes. The way I understand the process is, we make an announcement that the TDRs, that we're purchasing those. There's an application period that's a few weeks or a couple of months or something like that. What would be the drawbacks to having that application period be open-ended until the money is exhausted?
And I know that in past years where we haven't spent all the money, we've reopened. And so, we can certainly do that.
Part of it might be, Commissioner Gadway, if you don't have an end date, I know how I am.
Oh, yeah, procrastinating.
I just won't do it. You know, I'll do it next week.
Because of this urgency, yeah.
And then I'll do it next week. So, there is some value in having a deadline, even if we do reopen. So, we have money left over, and we wait a month or two, and we reopen the program. Because open-ended programs, I'm sure we're all guilty, maybe not some, a procrastination. And I may never get my application. And if I don't know, it's got to be in by a deadline.
Understood. Thank you.
And that cyclical nature is also connected to this board setting the price as well.
Yeah. So, I think a survey might help us out some.
I agree.
Yeah. So, motion?
Yes.
Commissioners, real quick, I will add that, Mark Wallace County Administrator, in the past, planning and zoning, they have had discussions with TDR owners. And so, the program has been tweaked a little bit. For example, the original requirement was that you could, if it was the first time you sold TDRs, you could sell 15. After that, you could only sell 10. And that was in a one-year cycle. So, if we're going back and changing, which we have, actually, they've changed the policy. So, now, it was, they would go back after that process, and then they would go back again within the same cycle. And you could have come back in, in a previous year. But that's not the way that it's written. So, I think the survey would do wonders to kind of open it up and hear exactly what they have to say.
Right.
But tweaks have been made, and it has helped, because they, like, even though it was over a two-year period, they did a pretty good job last year of buying those TDRs back.
And the limit was put in place because we had more sellers than money. And that was a way to spread the money out. So, everybody at least got something.
Right.
But we're not in that situation today. So, as long as we have the financial resources, we should see what we can do to improve the process.
Okay.
Yep.
And I'm overstepping, too, but we have a presentation later.
Yes.
And from the TDR group, for lack of a better term, they recommend, or was it from the Ag Preservation Advisory Board, they set a goal of like 200. That the PAR program, if we're at 178, that's a pretty close target range, I believe, if.
I believe that was the TDR committee. The Ag Board had the price recommendation.
Okay. So.
And forgive me, what's the cost to buy these 178?
It is 801,000 dollars.
So, just for perspective, we've been adding a million dollars every year to the PAR fund. So, we didn't even spend, in this round, what we allocated in the budget for this year. So, we need to figure out a way to make some adjustments, because we should at least be spending what we put in every year. Now, the bank may, or the reserve, I'm sorry, the reserve may take care of some of that, too. So.
How are the people being notified? Do they get something in the mail?
They get a letter.
We do a full press release, a mailer.
Okay.
It's on the website. Yeah. I mean, we, CMR worked with us really well to.
Every TDR owner gets a letter.
A lot of the rural areas don't have Comcast, though.
That's why they get a letter.
They get a letter.
Right.
They get mail, hopefully.
And for the reserve, we actually sent out postcards. So, yeah.
I'll make it if they allow me to.
I think that, I would love for you to.
All right. I make a motion that the Board of County Commissioners consider the PAR participation and direct staff to process the received applications.
Second.
Have motion and a second that we proceed with the PAR application process. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three, under new business, Department of Finance and Budget, Board of Education Budget Adjustment.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And just for the public, there are two budget adjustments. So, we're going to do one, then we'll just do the other one right behind it. So.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Beth Richmond, Deputy Director of Finance and Budget. I was going to do the background and then turn it over to Edie for, to read the discussion part, if that works.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, the subject for item number one is request for approval for Board of Education Budget Adjustment. The background, the Board of Education, or BOE, is requesting the Board of County Commissioners approval of the budget adjustment. Inner category transfers require the B O C C's approval.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm Eden Hudson, Chief Financial Officer. This first budget adjustment is requesting your approval to reallocate $250,000 from the psychologist's salary account in the instructional salaries category to the contracted psychologist's account in the other instructional cost category. As you may be aware, we have several psychologist vacancies. Therefore, we're having to utilize the services of outside vendors to provide psychology services to our students. So, we are requesting your approval to reallocate funds to support that cost.
So, Edie, how many vacancies do you have in that account? What's the dollar value of that?
If I'm not mistaken, we currently have about eight vacancies, about 400,000 to 500,000 dollars in salaries.
And you can't hire them, but you can contract them?
Through a company, yes.
Which is probably more expensive.
Uh, I think what we've looked at is, by the time we add salaries, compare salaries and benefits, what it would cost us to provide salaries and benefits, it comes out to be pretty close in cost.
Well, in the past, you've had to offer $5,000 sign-on bonuses, and you still can't get them. So, even when I was on the board, it was, it was an issue. So.
Correct. And it continues to be an issue.
It's nothing new.
Right.
Yeah.
Are you, what is the current limit for these public comments under Board of Education hearings?
There's been no change. Board of Education has maintained a limit of 10 speakers.
Sir, is the limit of 10 speakers still in place?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And that was Dr. Curry, Superintendent of Schools. Okay, gentlemen, any more questions on item number one?
No.
Motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
I have a motion and a second that we approve budget adjustment, as soon as I find it, in the amount of $250,000 from the psychologist's salary account to the contracted psychologist's account. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Name.
Oh, we have one opposed. So, clerk will record four to one. Next.
Okay. Item number two, the subject is Board of Education, a request to increase the FY '22 restricted budget. The background, the Board of Education, or BOE, is requesting the Board of County Commissioners approval of a budget adjustment for federal awards that were not outlined in the BOE's operating budget in FY '22.
So, in the memo that was provided to you, there are eight grants outlined here totaling 7.6 million dollars in federal awards. Most of those grants came about as a result of emergency legislation by the federal government to provide funding to school systems to address needs that arose as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. A lot of these funds are being used to address learning loss, to pay our staff to provide summer school classes, to do after-school tutoring sessions, and things like that, to address learning loss, to provide transportation for students to be able to attend summer school, as well as to purchase materials of instruction and equipment.
The question I had, reading it, this isn't going to increase MOE, is it?
No.
Okay. That was my thing. You know, sometimes, yeah, I see. So, it's basically just grant money, one-time purchase. Okay.
Yes. These are grant funds that, in many cases, will be used over the course of the next two to three years.
Going forward. Yeah, that was my worry was, yeah. Yeah, that was just my, yeah.
There's.
You should have read the line. It said, "No fiscal impact to the county."
Yeah, but see, that could be for this year.
Right.
That could be not for next year. So, you know, sometimes with grants, you know, the grant comes in, but then it creates a situation where we continue it going forward. So, I've seen many of those. So, I just wanted to clarify that it just was a one-time thing.
Right. No impact to the county. Correct.
The third item down, help me understand, it looks like it's $76,000 to $800,000.
Okay, so, the third item, that particular grant is for an amount of $76,923. The $800,000 that you see next to that is for all of the grants. All of these grants totaling $7.6 million, $800,000 of that money is, um, being budgeted in the instructional textbooks and supplies category.
Specifically for that category?
Yes.
Okay.
But not specifically for that grant. So, the $800,000 is all of those grants.
Okay. So, is it $800,000 from line item three?
No. Line item three is $76,000, but for all of those grants, from the trauma and behavioral health down to the supplemental instruction, $800,000 of that $7.6 million will be used in the supplies category across all of those grants.
Okay, can you explain category, or line item three, because I, I just, I don't understand it.
And I'll let Dr. Curry weigh in on this as well.
Yeah, I can see the columns are confusing because the one, the column one just stands alone. Those are the grants. Column two and three go together, the, the different categories where, where those grants are funded. Okay, so, the, um, Achieving Academic Equity for Black Boys is a statewide initiative. This book produced by the State Board of Education, a study. I can take you back as far as No Child Left Behind under Georgia W. Bush, where the feds required that we break down all of our student achievement data by, uh, by, uh, by race, by poverty, by special ed, and identify any particular groups that were not achieving where they should, and put additional effort into that. The, this particular program was an initiative of the State Board of Education. They identified a number of particular priorities or programs that, that might be, um, taken on. And the Calvert Elementary School was identified as a pilot program. So, Calvert Elementary was asked if they would participate. They identified two, within the study group, two particular initiatives that they're gonna focus on. Providing professional learning to support the implementation of culturally relevant pedagogy, culturally responsive teaching, and anti-bias practices in classrooms and schools. And then Recommendation 3.2, address the ongoing achievement gaps by using the science of reading, specifically with a focus on literacy training. So, a lot is, kind of, of the $76,000 grant is spent on materials and training for the staff, extra hours beyond their usual contract.
Did you say anti-biased in there somewhere?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Biased would be defined as or used how in that term?
Well, I, yeah, I could, I'd be glad to provide you with a copy of the state document. These are words straight from the state document about the various recommendations. So, this, you would have to, I mean, the, within, within the context of this, these recommendations, this study, uh, and the priorities, you, you know, the anti-bias training would have to be, uh, found within there.
I'm gonna have to process that, thank you.
I mean, I can tell you, my, you know, my definition of, of anti-bias is that we all have biases, and we all have to be cognizant of them, and whether or not they impact our work. And given, uh, given our work, we, uh, you know, we, we do occasionally run into folks who, it's not intentional. It's not maybe even deliberate, but to self-reflect on whether or not our past experiences might give us any sort of bias toward any particular person.
But if you're trying to implement an anti-biased position, why would you take a biased position to implement an anti-biased position?
That's, sir, I'm not sure I understand what you mean.
If you're wanting to specifically direct funds for a specific group, isn't that in and itself a biased?
Uh, that would be a, a matter of opinion. Let me, if I could, read from this document, the message from the chairperson who led this study group. The trend data over many years reveals a long history of lower academic performance and graduation rates. On the other hand, dropout rates and incidence of exclusionary disciplinary practices, in other words, suspension and expulsion, are much higher when compared to their peers. We're talking about African-American males. And I could tell you, our data shows it. Now, why? Why, why is that so? Do we just say, well, that's just the way they are? That's just the way it should be? Or should we put some effort into trying to better understand what we can do to see to it that those who haven't been, um, fully successful in the education process, what barriers there might be? What kind of, uh, uh, additional efforts we might take in order to increase the college-going rate? Increase the number of, uh, minority males who take advanced placement courses? Because we believe they can. But for, uh, a lot of variety of different reasons, they are not taking those courses at the same rate as other students. That's what we work on.
When I asked one of the school board members last week in reference to this, the school board member told me that it's actually not about just what this program's described. If there was somebody outside this program, it should actually be a socioeconomic position, not a race and gender position. And that they would be willing to allow people that are in the same socioeconomic position that this is actually targeted for, that they would be okay by allowing those people into the program, even though they didn't fit the race or gender designated by the title.
Certainly, whenever anyone, uh, takes effort to study and understand how bias might impact the work that we do, biases come in a whole lot of different ways, and it's not always about race.
Just to clarify, nothing's changed in the last 10 minutes on there's still only 10 parents allowed to speak at any public, uh, Board of Education meeting, correct?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And this program, I think you said, is only for one school?
One school is considered a pilot school. Uh, there is another, it, within the recommendations of this state study committee, they did recommend, uh, the consideration of equal opportunity schools, effort which we have been doing at Pawtucket High and Calvert High for several years in an effort to increase, number one, minority enrollment in advanced placement classes, and number two, uh, enrollment of our low-income students in advanced placement classes, no matter, uh, what their race.
So, if this is a pilot program, you're gonna measure the results after what period of time?
Certainly, we hope, uh, you know, we'll be looking to focus particularly on academic achievement. So, generally, the measure for academic achievement would be the state test, which is administered in the spring, as well as our benchmark test, which is called the MAP test. We give in the fall, in the winter, and in the spring.
And then you would take those results and use that in other schools?
If indeed it, uh, produced, uh, promising results, yes.
And if it doesn't produce any results, then it just goes away?
Often, uh, often you get initiatives like that, they're intended to. Uh, and certainly when you see, um, see promise, you replicate.
So, Dr. Curry, today in Calvert County School System, if there's students that are lagging behind, is there a program currently in place that tries to help those individual students catch up? Or is that occurring today?
Certainly, it, it is, it is, uh, but it, it concurs in so many different ways. From a high school schedule, like some of our high schools have what they call, um, they have an, an hour lunch, where really just 30 minutes for lunch and another 30 minutes to get, uh, for many students to get assistance and tutoring and help. Uh, for things like the equal opportunity schools, it calls for first identifying those students who do have potential for being successful in advanced placement classes, but don't have the confidence. And it, identifying them with some, uh, identifying a caring adult who they might prop them up and help them out and encourage them. It might, uh, include them having a, a group where they study together and support each other and encourage each other to, uh, reach higher and, um, strive for, uh, higher achievement. We do have, uh, a number, uh, as was mentioned earlier, many of these federal grants this year are intended to help with summer school and tutoring. Uh, the challenge is, when it comes to that, is number one, who wants to stay after school and do the tutoring? And number two, uh, do the, do the students, uh, will they stay after school and be tutored? And Saturday schools as well.
You said this is a state program. Is it a mandated state program, or it's just a program that was developed by the state?
Uh, it is, uh, no, nothing mandated at this time.
And I understand that this is a program that you're gonna try out, that was adopted, that was generated by the state. But to Commissioner Gadway's point, and I would hope that, you know, we'd cross all gender, racial, socioeconomic lines to help every student achieve their highest potential. So, it only gives me concern when I see we are specifying one particular group of individuals, when we should be helping all of our children. Which is what I think you said.
Certainly, we, certainly, we do. But as has been mentioned here, and as I mentioned before, since 20 years ago, now, No Child Left Behind, it was made very clear, you, you've, uh, the, um, uh, the challenges for, for whatever reason you might surmise, might be the reason. The challenge for minority males in particular to, uh, to reach the kinds of goals we would like for, uh, all of our children to reach. Certainly with special education and many programs like that, uh, there are a lot of different supports. But as far as understanding, uh, what the barriers might be to certain students, often it might be a higher rate of poverty. Often it might be reflective of, uh, the education of the family, things like that. All of those have an impact, uh, and are factors. Uh, not to mention trauma, we're now learning more and more about what trauma in the childhood, uh, can do to brain development. So, all, there's a little, it is a multi-dimensional thing.
Right. And what I would hope is that what we learn from this program, we can use across all lines to help every, lift every child, is my hope.
Certainly.
And, um, Commissioner Gadway?
Dr. Curry, I understand that there's been a request by many parents to have an open dialogue session with the Board of Ed, and the Board of Ed is refusing to do that. They did have an open dialogue session a couple of weeks ago, but it was with students, to where the students could ask questions and the Board of Ed would reply to those. There's been multiple requests by multiple people to have that done by, with adults and parents because they're not, because they're being limited to 10 people, and it's only a one-way dialogue, and there's never a response. Is that on the agenda before the end of the year?
Uh, I can't say that I'm aware that the Board of Education has scheduled anything.
Okay. In the, bear with me a second while I think of my question here. I understand that the Board of Education and/or the Board of Education's attorneys have, in writing, put something into the effect of they feel that some of the parents are overstepping their bounds by trying to interject themselves into the curriculum of the schools. Are you aware of that document?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay. I would like, I would like to get a copy of that document to you. I read it last night, and it was very disturbing to me that the Board of Education and/or the Board of Education Attorney would take that position. So, I will get back with you on that, sir.
Is this some way involved, uh, connected to a court case?
Yes, sir.
Well, that, court documents are different than, than general board action. I mean, we're in court.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what?
We're, 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 we are in court on a particular matter, and, and that's a little bit different whenever, you know, attorneys will have to prepare, uh, documents and, and defense.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you.
And the chart was a little confusing when you first, when we first looked at it, because of the way that.
Oh, the, the, yeah, yeah, I can, I can see the columns, you're looking for things to match across there.
Cause to be honest.
Next time, we'll make the categories vertical.
Mm-hmm.
Cause the numbers were changing and the names were changing as you moved across, and it was a little hard to keep track.
And Edie, you're always welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motions?
Based on staff's recommendation, move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second that we, uh, approve the budget adjustment to increase FY '20 '22 restricted budget for the federal awards as requested by the Board of Education. Discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Sheriff's Department, FTE Adjustment. Morning, Sheriff.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning, Sheriff.
Morning, Sheriff.
I was hoping you were bringing Laura with you.
I am. Am I reading the, uh?
You don't have to.
Lord, you wanna go ahead and read it?
Sure.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Laura Kent, Senior Budget Analyst, Office of Finance and Budget. I'm here on behalf of the Sheriff's Office. Can you hear me a little bit better now?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I read the very beginning or just from the background on? Sorry.
Just background on.
Okay, just making sure. Uh, background, the Sheriff's Office would like to request an adjustment to the staffing structure for the FY '20 '22 budget to add a corporal position. This would occur by way of a promotion. There will be an adjustment to reduce the senior deputy positions by one FTE and to increase the corporal positions by one FTE. There will not be an increase to the total number of FTEs. Discussion, in adjusting the FTEs to create this corporal position, it will allow the Sheriff's Office to continue to provide exceptional law enforcement services, and will allow the Sheriff the ability to increase and adequately staff the level of first-line supervision amongst the sworn personnel. Fiscal impact, the overall fiscal impact will be $4,481.51, 56 cents in salary and $2,464.85 in benefits. This will be covered with the cost savings from a senior deputy position that was vacated due to a transfer and will not be backfilled. The conclusion recommendation, the Sheriff respectfully asks the Board of County Commissioners to approve this request for an FTE staffing adjustment to the FY '20 '22 budget and reflect these changes in the Sheriff's Office staffing schedules.
If I may add something to the discussion, Commissioners, um, as you know, the legislature's pushed down many laws on us, and we are transferring a lieutenant, increasing a lieutenant to the standard, professional standard division to handle all the FOIA requests we expect and all the other camera stuff we expect. So, we've taken a lieutenant and added him to the professional standards, where we have a captain lieutenant and a sergeant working in that area. This corporal will just actually backfill him in a position where we keep our current staffing levels.
Questions? Motions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the reduction of the senior deputy positions by one FTE and to increase the corporal positions by one FTE. Discussions on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This President, just for the record, Commissioner McConkey stepped away from the room, but you were able to hear in the back room?
Yes, I was.
Thank you.
Have a nice day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, uh, scheduled for 10:40. We're almost right on time. Department of Public Works, Director Dahl.
Point, point of clarification, did we do presentations before? Or what was the, uh?
Commissioner, we. We flip-flop work sessions and presentations. We haven't quite got there yet.
Got it. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for keeping me honest.
You're the one who made the motion to change.
Well.
For the record.
Yes.
Director Dahl.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Carrie Dahl, Director of Public Works, here for Budget Adjustment Number 027 CIP, Dunley Court. Background, Department of Public Works, D P W, is requesting the transfer of funds from Dunley Court Culvert Repairs Project, Adopted in Fiscal Year 2022 Capital Improvement Plan, CIP. D P W would like to use some of the remaining funding from this project to fund the road drainage piping program. Discussion, D P W is requesting the transfer of $302,000 from the Dunley Court repairs to the road drainage piping CIP program. The remaining funds from the Dunley Court Culvert Project are actual savings in the project due to the use of better technology for the repairs, which were less invasive. The transfer of savings to road drainage piping repairs. will enable DPW to further support the highway maintenance and reconciling citizen customer service requests and other structural repairs through contracted support. Fiscal impact, the FY 2022 Dunley Court Culvert Repairs CIP will decrease by $302,000, and the road drainage piping CIP budget will increase from $127,051 to $429,051. Conclusion recommendation, DPW recommends that after any public comment, the Board of County Commissioners take action to close the record as required. With board, with road repairs, staff will return in 10 days to request B O C C's approval of the budget adjustment number 027 CIP for $302,000 from Dunley Court Culvert Repairs Project to the road drainage piping program.
If I could, Commissioner President, there were two public hearings that are scheduled for today. Both of them were duly advertised, and the certificate of publication is in the record for each of those two. The public is invited to sign in to speak to my right, and there is one caller on the line if they would like to speak. They're invited to dial star nine to raise their hand. Callers that are speaking as the designated representative of a group will be allocated five minutes. Those who are speaking as an individual will be allocated two minutes. And there is no one who has signed up for this public hearing to my right.
There are no speakers on Zoom.
So, questions? Actions? Motions?
Mr. President, I make a motion at the Board of County Commissioners, take action to close the record as required. With the road repairs, staff will return in 10 days to request the Board of County Commissioners approval of budget adjustment number 027 CIP for $302,000 from the Dunley Court Culvert Repairs Project to the road drainage piping program.
Second, what do you say?
Have a motion in a second that we, excuse me, close the record. Staff will return after 10 days to request the B O C C approval and to request adoption of the related budget resolution. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Director Dahl.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next public hearing is the Office of the County Attorney.
Thank you, Commissioners. As for the last hearing, there is a sign-up sheet located to my right, and there may still be a caller on Zoom, who is welcome to press star nine. Background, the Board of, has directed that the county citizens be afforded a wide range of opportunities to influence the making of public policy. Public comment is one way to inform the decision-making process. Presently, many of the more than 50 boards and committees appointed by the Board of County Commissioners do not make provision for public comment within their agenda. An appropriate amendment to Chapter 11 of the Code of Ordinances is the most efficient means of mandating provision for public comment where, within the Board's jurisdiction. Draft ordinance has been prepared for the public hearing. Fiscal impact, none. Conclusion recommendation, following the acceptance and consideration of public input regarding this amendment, the Board is asked to close the record and adopt the resolution amending Chapter 11 of the Code of Ordinances of Calvert County, requiring public comment to be accepted by all boards, committees, councils, commissions over which the Board of County Commissioners have jurisdiction. And no one has signed up.
Comments?
No caller.
Questions?
There are no speakers on Zoom.
Thank you. Questions? Motions?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Move that we close the record and approve and adopt the recommended amendment to the county code.
Second?
I have a motion in a second to close the record and approve and adopt the recommended amendment to the county code. Discussion on that motion? So that, Mr. County Attorney, this does not cover the Board of Education, correct?
Correct, the Board, the Board of County Commissioners has no jurisdiction over the Board of Education, so it does not cover the Board of Education.
Mr. County Attorney, does it apply because we're the governing body that funds them?
It does not.
Shucks.
No, their autonomy comes from the education article of the state code. They, they truly are independent and have the statutory authority to adopt their own policies and procedures.
At least we'll set an example.
Right, just for the public's information, we took this action to ensure that all of our boards and commissions that report to us have to follow public comment guidelines. We did not want to get in a situation where certain boards or commissions or committees didn't want to take public comment, and wanted to make sure they understood that. And as Commissioner Gadway mentioned, we're just trying to set a tone here. Hopefully, others will follow, that as elected officials, we all feel a responsibility that we have to hear from our constituents. And as I said last week, that a speaker making public comment bears some responsibility to be respectful, and that we would not allow, even for our boards and commissions, to tolerate certain comments that are made by constituents. So while that may not be said in the resolution, it certainly is the.
It is actually part of Resolution 6-89.
Just shows you I didn't read it. But that's the reason we're taking this action today, to ensure that we, as county government, provide every opportunity to our citizens to make comment. All right, now that I'm done, anybody else? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. County Attorney. So now we are going to flip, as was, as was motion by Commissioner Wiems, and we will have work session number one, Department of Planning and Zoning.
Thank you, sir.
We're good.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. With me today is Rachel O'Shea, our zoning planner. And in lieu of reading the memo, because a lot of that information's covered in the presentation, we're just going to jump right into the presentation on two proposed text amendments. This is the first step in the text amendment process. It's a four-to-six-month process, so we're here for your input.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
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 So Planning and Zoning staff presented in August of 2021 to the Board of County Commissioners on the history of density in Calvert County. Follow-up work session was done in September to review past text amendments and to receive action from the Board of County Commissioners. After the presentation, the B O C C directed staff to move forward with two text amendments regarding the Prince Frederick Town Center, Newtown, and Village sub-districts. We're here today to review those text amendments and to request direction to begin the text amendment process. Both of these text amendments were originally completed back in 2015 and were an attempt to reduce and/or remove restrictions and provide more flexibility for development in the Newtown and Village sub-areas of the Prince Frederick Town Center. The text amendments being proposed today will now provide consistency between the sub-districts of the Prince Frederick Town Center. The next slide is a few maps, just to give you some background of the layout of the Prince Frederick Town Center, showing the locations of the Newtown and Village sub-districts. So the text amendment 2101A is a proposed amendment to the Calvert County zoning ordinance and Prince Frederick zoning ordinance. Previous text amendment 1508 increased the maximum density in the Newtown district of Prince Frederick from 14 units per acre to 24 units per acre. The request now is to reverse the previous text amendment and decrease the maximum density in Newtown district back to 14 units per acre. Since this text amendment was adopted in 2015, there have been no incoming projects that have proposed a design to take advantage of the 24 units per acre. This was discussed with the T D R Committee at their meeting in October, and they agreed with the proposal. And they thought that the 24 units was not the type of financial investment and design that developers were able to economically pull off in the area. So the next slide shows you the language that will be removed, which is the language that was added in 2015. It's just taking out the sentence that does away with the 24 units per acre density. So that one's pretty simple. We're going to move on now to the, the next text amendment, which is 2101B. This is also amendment proposed to the Calvert County zoning ordinance and the Prince Frederick zoning ordinance. The previous text amendment 15-08B removed the condition from all dwelling types in the Village District of the Prince Frederick Town Center, which had required that at least 50% of the site be reserved for either commercial office or industrial uses. The request now is to reinstate the previous text amendment and bring back the 50% requirement. This was also discussed with the T D R Committee, and it was the feeling of the develop, the developer representatives that the 50-50 is a difficult number to meet exactly, and requested that we put in the text amendment, amendment, some type of flexibility. And so through this text amendment, we're proposing the planning commission have the authority to flex that 50-50, depending on, on the layout of, of the design for the project.
So what would that criteria be?
We will, we will, I will get into the language that we're proposing in the next couple of slides. So we're going to go through the proposed changes. This is the use chart, and it is just taking the, removing the P, which is for permitted, and putting a C for conditional that, that we're adding back the 50-50 condition. And then these are the conditions in the use chart, and we're just adding back in the Village District to the condition for the 50-50 requirement. And so this is the language that we're proposing that allows the flexibility of the 50-50. And I'm going to read the entire paragraph for you. The planning commission may flex the percentage ratio of the required condition if it, if it can be demonstrated that the proposed development will either contribute comprehensively to a housing mix within the town center or contribute to a true integrated mixed use, including but not limit, limited to residential, commercial, office, or industrial uses. The planning commission may waive if the site is determined not suitable as measured in terms of generally recognized marketing standards, including, including visibility, accessibility, site costs, and/or neighboring uses. So that concludes the changes that we're proposing.
So what does visibility mean?
Typically, a commercial development, a lot of chain stores won't locate off of arterial roads. So that would be one example, if they can't be visible by cars driving up and down Route 4, that if it was, a developer was developing a property that hasn't no visibility to Route 4, they may not be able to attract the type of commercial development.
What if they're not on Route 4? What if the project is on the Loop Road? Is visibility still an issue?
It depends on the, who they're, what type of commercial they're trying to attract, because there is commercial that will go off of secondary local roads as well. It would be up to what type of development, if they had a client in mind. I think that would be when they could go to the planning commission and say, you know, we have this business that is willing to develop on our property, but, you know, for whatever reason, they can't meet the 50-50. Maybe they can only meet 20% because of the size of it. And so, I mean, that could be a justification that they take.
I didn't see, is there a minimum?
There is not, but we can certainly add one.
So it could be zero?
As written currently, yes.
And site cost?
Just all items that the planning commission would be able to consider if, I can't come up with an example right here on the spot.
Well, you're using them in this language.
We are, we are.
You should be able to defend them.
So I'm sure that if they, so I'm thinking of one in mind that would be off of, say, the Loop Road, and they have, in developing, they have certain number of units that they need to do to meet their cost benefit to develop that property. And that number of units would take up the entire property, then they would be looking for a waiver to not have to do the commercial component, because it would lessen the number of units they could develop.
So it's going to give them all now?
It could.
I'd like to see a minimum put in there for business or commercial industrial use.
Okay. Any suggestions? Cut it in half?
I mean, with, where, the ask was 50-50.
Right.
And I see, and I applaud what was done here, but this still allows it to go to exactly what it is now under conditional.
Right.
Am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah. I don't know what that minimum would be, but I was anticipating 50-50. In order to try and allow some flexibility, I'd be willing to come off of that, but I don't know how far.
So I have an example, there was a subdivision that was done in Prince Frederick, and it went before the planning commission, the 50-50 was in effect. This was prior to 2015 when the text amendment was done, and the planning commission reduced it to, the commercial to 20%. So they actually did an 80-20.
And which, so, so I could have a reference to that to put that in context, which location was that?
It didn't get developed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But that's not a good example.
It gives me pause as well, because it, it kind of changes the spirit of what we're trying to do. And unfortunately, past has shown that if we don't make this as black and white as possible, spirit really gets thrown out the window. And then it's unfortunate for sitting boards and future boards to be able to try to go forward with what the spirit was, because somebody found a way to get around it. So I don't know if we're prepared. I think this is going to have to come back.
Well, I mean, the planning commission can make the recommendation.
We can make any changes you want now, this, we're in draft phase.
The, to follow up on the previous question where it was approved for the 80-20?
Yes.
I know you said it wasn't developed, I just, I'm trying to circle on that, it wasn't developed at that time under those circumstances. Has it since been developed under different circumstances?
No, sir.
Okay. I was just wondering if it was one of those that ended up being all apartments?
No.
Okay.
So I think from what I'm hearing, you may have to bring this one back with some rationale.
If, if we were to sit there and give them, it's suggested be 50-50, but cannot go, go below 60-40, if we were to agree on this at this point, could that be added into that and then immediately go into the requested?
To go to the planning commission?
Requesting meeting with the planning commission?
Yeah, absolutely.
So it wouldn't delay it another month and a half to two months?
No.
And it still could change.
Sure.
Right, because it's still just a recommendation.
Right.
I'd like to recommend that it be a 50-50 with no less than 60-40.
Okay, so that you, you're wanting 60 commercial or 60 residential?
No more than 60 residential.
Got it, okay.
No less than 40 commercial.
Got it.
Commercial and all the other implications go along with that.
I'm sorry, no less than 60 residential?
Instead of 50-50.
No more.
No more than 60% residential, no less than 40% commercial. It'd give a 10% leeway for that conditional period without a special variance or something like that.
Do we foresee why we would need a special variance, or would the 50-50 not be enough?
So the 50-50 would be cut and dry. You, you either do 50% residential and 50% commercial or?
Just from past experiences, I mean, not that I'm not adhered to being flexible on something, but boy.
My point in bringing that up is, the P is permitted as 50-50. The C would be conditional to the 60-40. They'd have to meet special conditions, if I understand that correctly, in order to be allowed to do it at the 60-40. But it would be in the law or the ordinance, zoning, whatever it's called, that they could go to the 60-40 conditionally, but they have approval to go 50-50 as is.
But do we know what the special conditions are?
Yes, so we've listed in criteria that they would have to meet, and then go before the planning commission and make the request. So the planning commission, if they don't feel that they've met one of those criteria, could deny it.
Okay.
And then they'd be back to 50-50.
Right.
Okay, okay, I'm okay with that. Okay, okay, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I'm just a little bit concerned, I mean, without getting some input from the public.
Oh, we'll get there.
That's where it's going.
How it's going to impact them, the developers, the residential builders, however it is. I don't know if that's going to scare people away from doing anything, I don't know. But at some point, we'll get some feedback on that?
Yes, we will. So we'll take it through the process, the next step is the planning commission followed by?
Public hearings and the whole works.
Get agency comments.
I just hate for properties to sit there and somebody can't, they're like, well, I don't want to, I don't want to mess with it because I got to do this or this or this, you know, kind of thing.
Sure. And certainly people can submit comments and then come out to the public hearing for public comment.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to schedule a work session with planning commission regarding these two amendments as adjusted as we discussed with the fifty fifty and the sixty forty conditionally.
Second?
Have a motion and a second that we direct staff to schedule a work session with the planning commission regarding these two amendments. Any discussion on that motion?
I have just a point of clarification.
Yes, sir.
If we go to slide seven and we look at Newtown, this, a lot of this, shall we say, has its origin back to two thousand fifteen, sixteen timeframe when the text amendments were passed. So if you look on Newtown, it currently has conditional on both. I think that the flexibility, you speak of sixty forty versus fifty fifty, it could be seventy thirty. You're looking for a specific number. Just my take, just to stay consistent, the conditional approval basically comes back to the planning commission.
That's correct.
So you don't know what you don't know. And until you have something proffered or proposed, you really don't know. So locking in a number per se, to me, I mean, I'll go forward with what we're doing, but I just caution against that because we don't know what we don't know. That's all.
Any other discussion?
I guess my other question would be, so if you had a smaller lot, say, two acres, and you had to do fifty fifty, or is everybody thinking more like commercial on one level and residential on the other type of thing? Is that what?
That's an option, sure.
So I'm just thinking if a building, you know, I'm sure it has restriction on height. So, I don't know, I just, the thing needs to be really thought out, I don't know. Because we could run into some different issues with that, I guess.
I do believe the height would allow a commercial on the first floor and apartment on the second floor, almost everywhere.
Down in North Beach right now, there's some, one real estate person built something similar to that, I haven't seen it yet, but.
Yeah, that would be great.
Also, just for clarification, basically this was policy, or something very similar to this was policy up until twenty?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Yes.
So is all we're doing is reverting six years. We're going, basically, we're going back six years to what the planning and zoning was six years ago.
Correct.
Roughly speaking. Well, and to that point, the density levels didn't work. I think that point needs to be made too.
Couldn't with the stormwater management regulations.
Well, the twenty-four units per acre became, shall we say, dead in the water. Because, and that's going to dictate a lot of what can be done. So.
So what was the premise for twenty-four units, not to digress, but?
When the Armory Square area, well, it's more than that, it's a larger area, but we had a potential developer looking at developing that property and they needed what they felt was some more flexibility. So it included the twenty-four units per acre, it included a height increase setback from Route four. It was a whole package of text amendments that we brought forward on basically their behalf for consideration.
Twenty fifteen set.
That's correct.
So this is again reverting parts of all of that that was brought to try and suit a particular developer.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Moving right along.
So we're still here?
Yeah, we're still here.
As part of that same history of density, we had a lot of conversation about the TDR sliding scale, which is for Prince Frederick, Lesby, and Solomonstown centers. So we reconvened the TDR committee and Rachel's going to take us through our discussions that we had with them.
Now, Ms. Rachel?
Yes.
Could you introduce said members of the committee that are present, please?
Yes, we have Mr. Wilson Freeland in the audience from the TDR committee with us today.
And Rodney Gertz.
Yes, and Rodney Gertz is also with us.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. So as also directed from the work session in September, we're here today to review the history of the TDR committee and the TDR sliding scale, hoping to make a recommendation on how to proceed with the TDR sliding scale moving forward. This directive was discussed with the current TDR committee at their October meeting and the committee agreed that a work session was needed to review the history of the TDR committee and the TDR sliding scale to understand how we got to where we are today. So we're going to go back several years to two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen with Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board. The Ag Board was concerned with decreased program participation, low TDR price, and a TDR surplus. So they conducted a comprehensive review of the program and came up with the following list of recommendations. They were looking to restrict new TDR creation, improve and streamline existing TDR markets, create new TDR markets, and consider relaxing other stressors on development that compete against TDR usage. They then proceeded to come up with a list of proposal to improve the program. Next slide. The APAB followed their comprehensive review with a proposal to improve the county's land preservation program. This included a list of action items to achieve the previous recommendations. They wanted to create a market where five hundred to six hundred TDRs were sold annually through a number of options between developer purchase of three hundred per year for construction of sixty homes, county purchase of two hundred TDRs per year through the PAR program and the LAR program, and increased participation through the state land preservation programs, mouth and rural legacy. They also wanted to place a moratorium on the certification of the small lot development rights and do away with the small lot program altogether.
Quick question.
Yes.
What is the small lot TDR program? If you can educate me, I'd really appreciate it.
Yes, no problem. It was, I'll get to it later, it was a text amendment and we did move forward and do away with the program. So it's not in existence anymore.
Never mind then, thank you.
It was a big mistake.
Yes.
Enough said.
Number three. They wanted to facilitate the use of forest conservation TDRs to meet the Forest Conservation Act and they wanted to revise the criteria for the land preservation program to only allow the best remaining active working farms. Next slide. The agricultural preservation program progresses through years two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen. Planning and zoning staff in conjunction with the APAB drafted recommended changes to the program rules and regulations. They also then worked and placed a moratorium on the creation of new APDs in two thousand thirteen and this is still in effect today. Forest conservation FCTDRs were added and allowed to be used to meet forest conservation requirements during time of subdivision and development. This was text amendment fourteen dash oh three. Staff worked on options and conducted work sessions regarding alternative markets for TDRs, including a TDR sliding scale based on dwelling units per acre, as well as commercial and mixed use TDR requirements. Over the next two years through two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen, staff along with the farming and development community worked on reviewing options for changes to the TDR program. The focus was on changes between the town center to allow a lower TDR requirement per unit in a manner that encouraged a higher density and variety of housing types. In late two thousand fourteen, staff proposed a sliding scale for TDRs in town center. In early two thousand fifteen, several staff members met with the development community to discuss three potential changes to the TDR program in the town center. Staff was asked to review these suggestions and present an analysis. At that time, the BOCC requested that a TDR committee review the options and make recommendations to move forward. The representatives from the agricultural community included Susie Hanswells, Steve Oberg, Hagner Muster, and Wilson Freeland. From the development community included Rick Bailey, Randy Barrett, Rodney Gertz, and Anthony Williams. The purpose of the committee was to review potential options for changing the county's TDR program with a focus on use of TDRs in town center as the comprehensive plans designated growth area and TDR receiving area. The committee's consensus focused on requiring a TDR sliding scale by unit type within the town centers with public sewer. The results from the TDR committee in two thousand fifteen were two text amendments, one being fifteen dash oh two, which was the adoption of the TDR sliding scale by unit type, which we have today. It also discontinued Prince Frederick equal area backyard to size of building footprint requirement.
Rachel?
Yes.
Excuse me. What does that have to do with TDRs?
It was just included with the text amendment.
Why?
It was grouped together at the time.
Had nothing to do with TDRs?
That's true.
It was, I guess, thought easier to take three text amendments, bundle them together, take them forward, and yeah, so.
Because the next one is the same thing.
At the, at the time that the TDR committee met and it was other items that the developers felt were impediments to development within the town center.
Still had nothing to do with TDRs.
True.
Should not have been lumped in with TDRs. Because the next one is the same thing. Go ahead.
The next text amendment was fifteen dash oh five and this was the discontinuation of the small lot TDR program. Next slide, please. So since the adoption of the TDR sliding scale, there have been four major housing projects that have come to fruition. The first being Calvert Hills, which was ninety-six apartments and it used seventy-four TDRs. Beechtree in two thousand eighteen was two hundred and forty-nine apartments and used two hundred and twenty-four TDRs. Batuxin Commons was a sixty-eight townhouse development that used a hundred and fourteen TDRs. And then Lesby Villas, which was two hundred and seventy-six apartments and it used two hundred and fifty TDRs. So prior to the text amendment in two thousand fifteen that brought the TDR sliding scale, we did not have housing projects.
So Lesby Villas has already certified their TDRs?
Yes.
So that's a done deal?
Yes.
Well, they bought TDRs anyway.
Right.
So fast forwarding to today, the Department of Planning and Zoning in two thousand twenty was directed to propose an amendment to increase the requirement for the use of transferable development rights. The recommendation was to change the TDR sliding scale to be more equitable in terms of housing type by size and number of bedrooms and therefore would increase some of the TDR requirements. The amendment was presented to the BOCC in two thousand twenty and forwarded to the planning commission in August of two thousand twenty. The planning commission did not recommend the text amendment to move forward to be distributed for agency comment. They advised that the TDR sliding scale should be reviewed and analyzed during the Prince Frederick master plan update. At a follow-up session with the Board of County Commissioners, it was requested to reconvene the TDR committee that originally met back in two thousand fifteen when the text amendment fifteen dash oh two was adopted. Next slide, please. This is the list of participants in the two thousand twenty TDR committee. In addition to the farming community representatives and developer community representatives, Dana Jones from the Housing for All Task Force and Mark Frisco with the Chamber of Comments were included to add the perspective of advocates for affordable housing to the discussion. Next slide, please. The TDR committee came up with a list of concerns regarding the TDR program. The program is out of balance between the supply and demand of TDRs. TDR prices inaccurate due to the imbalance of the supply-demand, which if left up to the free market drives the TDR price down, which is an inaccurate true value of the TDR for the farmer. Completing TDR transactions is difficult, time-consuming, and costly because of private negotiations that are unreliable. The county's land preservation program is suffering from a moratorium placed on the creation of new APDs that has been in place for years because of TDRs have been stagnant. Following the concerns, the TDR committee came up with a list of recommendations. Next slide, please. One, being establish the TDR bank managed by the county, which has been completed and is now operational as the TDR reserve. Two, reinstate previous level of land preservation funding, has also been completed. Number three, retain the current TDR sliding scale. Number four, lift the moratorium on creation of new APDs after the APAB's recommended program changes are adopted into the rules and regulations. This is in progress. Five, continue to allow density to be increased with use of TDRs in tier three, this is retained. Six, expand the rural legacy areas to include all the priority preservation areas, and this is also in progress. And seven, continue to waive TDRs for projects that meet senior, affordable, and workforce housing criteria, this is to be retained. Next slide, please. So at the TDR committee's meeting in October, the resurgence of the TDR sliding scale was discussed. The group agreed that by increasing the TDR requirement in the town center, it would halt townhouse and multifamily projects that are needed for young individuals, beginning families, to be able to live in the county. Developers cannot make these types of projects economically work with any increase in TDR requirements. The group agreed that further investigation is needed regarding town center buildout, the effect of infrastructure, and the desire and impacts of a town center expansion before a decision should be made on the TDR sliding scale. The TDR committee felt that proposing a change to the TDR sliding scale is premature and that the use of TDRs in town center should be analyzed through the town center master plan update process and that the planning commission and the BOCC should not move forward with any decisions until they are presented the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan and associated options. Next slide, please. So moving forward to next steps, recommend the commissioners direct staff to further analyze the TDR sliding scale and use TDRs within the town center during the master plan development process and to hold off proposing any TDR requirement changes until after the Prince Frederick Master Plan draft is presented for board consideration.
So we're open for discussion. At our last meeting, it was to investigate, go back and talk to the TDR committee. If it's the board's decision that you don't want to take that recommendation, we're certainly open to any options you want us to investigate for a text amendment or you could take their recommendation. We also have the two committee members in the audience if you want to hear from them.
Can we go back to slide eight for a minute?
That's what I was going to go to.
Yeah. So of these projects, how long have those projects been allowed to develop those properties into apartments? How long has that zoning been in place for?
Since the creation of the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan. It was just?
Eighty-six?
But correct me if I'm wrong, it was only, they were only successful at being able to do this since two thousand fifteen when the sliding scale went into effect.
Correct.
So in that same time period of four years, how many single-family detached residential dwellings have been built in the county versus the six hundred and eighty-nine apartments and townhouses that have been built in the county in that same time period? Any idea?
I don't, but I can get you that number.
Okay.
But these projects were long in the approval process, long before this board was put in place?
I can speak to the Beechtree, I know that when I worked in public works in the early two thousands, we did have a proposed apartment complex in that area, yes. It just never got built.
I know the Villas was two thousand five and I believe that zoning changed in, what, eighty-three or eighty-six? But that was part of when the Food Lion Shopping Center was put together. But that was part of when the uh, Food Lion Shopping Center was put together. That was that whole proposed package.
Chapline, yes.
Um, if I can, Mr. President, um, mine is slide nine. Um, as we've seen with slide eight, it looks like there is ample apartments on books and existing. I would like to see the one, two, and three. I, I have always said, I believe Calvert County is, is, is a, a part, excuse me, a uh, bedroom community. I don't believe when folks come here, they're, they're, they're leaving areas that reflect a lot of apartments. I've never seen anybody come up to me and they say, hey, Mike, build more apartments. I just don't see it. In fact, I hear the contrary. Um, I would like to see actually the one, two, and three multifamily go to five um, TDRs. I don't see the, it's so much greater than just the building. It's the traffic. It's, it, 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 it's everything that comes with it. It, it's, I don't, I've said it before, I don't think we can afford more apartments. I just don't, my, my twenty percent, I just don't think we can afford it. There's already enough coming on the books that's gonna put a little strain on things, so I, I would like to see the TDRs move to five on those.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Before I make any formal decision or any other comments, I would really like to hear what the two members in the uh, room have to say about it. Mr. Wilson or Mr. Uh.
Gertz.
Gertz. Would either one of you care to share anything?
I'm Rodney Gertz with Quagmireville Homes. Morning.
Morning.
The uh, yeah, I think most people don't ask me to talk, cause it's hard to uh, and then shut me up, but uh. The, the, it's just such a complex issue, and I think that's what I would just basically ask the, the board to, to truly take a, a lot of length and concern with what, what to do and what we're trying to accomplish and, and how to control it. Uh, the, the, the old process that were in place led to no growth, no use of TDRs in the town centers for over a ten-year period. There was ten TDRs used in Prince Frederick over a ten-year period. So really, when the initial committees were formed and we were initially discussed this in two thousand and fifteen, it was this large issue of what do we do with all these TDRs that we've promised the farmers that we're gonna have a market for them, and the market wasn't there. And so that's kind of where all this came from, to actually spur some things that made, made that kind of, you know, that whole process work. And then, at the time, the state of Maryland and Calvert County, per the comprehensive plan, was pushing everybody to these types of projects, these town center projects that have apartments, and they have townhouses, and they have some commercial mix, and, and that's what everybody was told to do in the state of Maryland, saying, don't do. I was doing completely the opposite. I was out in the rural areas, building on, on farms and, and single-family houses, and I was told, that's a horrible thing. And, and now you come to town centers and, and we hear it's a horrible thing, you know, the apartments are bad and, and the same. So it's, it's just the complexity of it's kind of all revolved around the TDRs and the zoning of the county. The zoning of the county and the comprehensive plan originally showed some of this growth, and I agree with Mike one hundred percent. You know, nobody wants to see any runaway growth, any cra, you know, that, because we've seen that all over, any, any other area in the state, that people want Cal, Calvert to be country. They want it to be real, me included. You know, I, I, I absolutely applaud all your efforts in that. It's just a very complex issue, and I hear so many things, and this is my business, this is my world, and I hear so many things that, like, with, missing a couple key points in anything changes everything. And it's hard for anybody who's not one hundred percent in every day, and whether it be Mary Beth who works every day, and, and, and as a commissioner, I, I don't know how you guys even do what you do, because it's so hard to get a grasp of every, you know, in every arena you have to make decisions in and get a full grasp of, of, of that situation. But, but the sliding scale was brought in to actually encourage a few of these projects. There's very little land that these projects can even happen on currently in the, in the town centers. I think if you investigated that, you'd find that there's only, I only know of the two that we're on, Vargo and, and, and uh, uh, Lesby, as well as Johnny Gott's got his other piece on the side of Prince Frederick. I don't even know of anything else. It's any, uh, substantial. There's a couple of things that would be more primarily, I think, focused towards commercial, but, so I would say basically, really controlling what you're doing, just don't expand, don't expand from where you are. Don't expand town centers. I know, you know, I've had that discussion before, that, that, you know, if, if you, that, that, that limits it, but changing, modifying things that we're doing on the side in TDR just makes everything go to zero again, and if that's truly what we want. I would just ask that with grandfather people that have already spent millions of dollars uh, on projects that are, that are basically that vested, uh, and, and in that case, would, would, you know, that, that, you kind of would, would respect that. Um, it's just the, the use of TDRs. I mean, I think, I think that, that is your throttle. There's only, we know how many there's left. It's a finite amount. It's eight to ten thousand, uh, ten thousand. We're gonna retire half of them, I think, from the funding you guys did and from what you've accomplished not long ago. Uh, over the next fifteen to twenty years, I think you've had a lot more money to the par program, which is uh, uh, you know, keep Calvert country. You know, there couldn't be a better theme for that, you know, so I, I think we've done that. So if there's, you know, three or four thousand of these to be used, and, and, and I think they're looking for pristine farms to put into the program from here on out, not, not swamps and not things that we're allowed to pass in the small lot type program, none of that's gonna be allowed again, so that's not gonna happen. And when they're gone, it kind of just halts all growth. I mean, it really kind of halts all development, other than, you know, conventional densities, which is, which is very minimal, and, and on most of those types of sites, water source sites, wouldn't even work, you know, so. So uh, I would just say that it's, it's surely not a, a runaway situation. It's not something where ten projects are coming here. There's not even the land or the place for it. Uh, there, there's, there's, I think we have time to kind of just evaluate. I'd be more than happy to talk to an, anybody at any time, as far as on, on, just it's too hard to sit here and take the time today, but I, I think that uh, what the committee has said, and we do have lengthy discussions in the committee, and there is people from all aspects of the community, and in that decide that what's there right now kind of uh, is, is what was suggested to get to have a few projects come in. You do need some residential with some commercial, and you do need some apartments or townhouses for people that are in this ecosystem of housing. Not everybody can afford the five hundred and fifty thousand dollar single-family home out on a one-acre lot. I, I used to build quarter, quarter million dollar houses and thought that was crazy back then in northern Calvert, and now I just want to cry when I see the kids of the county, and I see my, my friend, my daughter's friends, they can't even live here. They moved to California, they moved to Charlotte, they move everywhere, cause it's cheaper than actually trying, they can't find a place or they can't, can't be here, and that's, it's just, that, that's what this was all about, to try to keep some balance in the, in the housing ecosystem, let's say, of, of what's needed to keep people that do want to stay here, that young police officer, that school teacher. When you drive through Beach Tree, and I've heard so much negativity about Beach Tree, man, just drive through and look at the cars. Just look at the people that are there, the school teachers, the eight or ten police cars that are there, the, the, I know, I know thirty people that live in that community, and they're really good Calvert County contributing citizens, and it's just a very, you know, it, it's a, it's a healthy part of kind of any community area that you have some amount of it, not saying runaway, not saying it stuff's everywhere, but a, a little bit of that type of housing kind of helps strengthen an entire area, so, but uh, but that's it.
I do have a question.
Yep.
So, Mr. Gertz, we hear that economics won't allow for more than one TDR. So I, I had a friend in the banking business run a number for me, and based on the information I have about Beach Tree, uh, an apartment at Beach Tree, a two-bedroom apartment in Beach Tree rents for sixty dollars a day. If you break down the monthly rent, to sixty dollars a day. If we add one more TDR to a two-bedroom apartment, it'll increase that rent from sixty dollars to sixty-one dollars a day. So it's, the economic analysis is that one more dollar a day on that apartment kills it.
Yeah, it doesn't get looked at on that side of the equation. It gets looked at on the other side of the equation, which is the extra million and a half dollars it takes on the front end of the project to, to actually finance the project and get on the front end. You can only pay, you're only supposed to, you're not even supposed to pay more than ten thousand dollars for your, for, for the property that sits on, which includes all of your land cost. Uh, so, so you have to buy the land and then the TDRs, if you put, if you put a TDR or two on it, or I mean, a, a second TDR or a third TDR, you're already over what you're even supposed to even make that work, which then you can't get financing, uh, you can't, when, when, once you get to that level, you, you, all your financing options go out the door, and yours can't economically work, so it's a, it's looking on the other side. I'll just take an example of a, a, a two hundred, you know, two hundred and fifty unit project, and just keep it easy, two hundred and fifty TDRs, at forty-five hundred, a million, whatever that is, a million, uh, one million, one hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand. One point one two five. Uh, so, so, but with that, it, it, it's, it, that number is the one that actually can, you know, cripple the project. And, and as we've seen, nothing happened when it was five TDRs. Absolutely nothing happened, and it won't happen, and that's, if you want to stop any type of economically viable housing for our youth and for, not just our youth, and that's the weird part is just look at, I, I would just beg you, go to Beach Tree and just look at the people that lived there, you know, the.
Rodney, and not, not to cut you off, but I can remember being a youth back in nineteen ninety, and the CDA program came out, and I bought a single-family home at eighty-five thousand, and the interest rate was eight and seven-eighths percent, and everybody said, wow, 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 wow. Well, I'll tell you, there's houses out there now, two hundred thousand dollars, but the interest rate is less than four percent. So when you take that mortgage out and actually have home ownership to somebody who's paying sixteen hundred a month to rent, okay, that's where I have the disconnect, because what it did for me was, it gave me home ownership at the same rate people were paying rent for, but it allowed me to take that home as a starter home, is what they used to call it, and go to a bigger home once I started a family. No disrespect for, there is a need for apartments, there is a need for rentals, but how many? And to me, they're not the answer for the, for the young families starting out, because they have no equity at the end of this. So they spend the five years paying rent, they walk with nothing, meanwhile, prices move up and move up, where to me, the incentive was back then, was the eight and seven-eighths interest rate was a lot lower, folks were paying eleven and twelve percent. But there was a cap in that program, eighty-five thousand dollars was the most you could do, and it was a lower settlement cost to get into. I don't know if these houses, these apartments have deposits. I'm sure they do. Typically, it's first in, last month. If it is, that's thirty-two hundred dollars to put down. Well, that's a nice chunk to put down on settlement cost. You take and put that down on settlement cost, and now you're trying to buy a starter home with interest rates that we've never seen so low. So no disrespect to that thing where we're not gonna have cops and stuff like that, and teachers be able to buy a home, but I, we weren't allowed to make, me and my first wife at the time, I don't believe, could make more than forty thousand dollars. If you see wages right now, minimum wage is going to fifteen dollars an hour here very soon. You can have two people working at McDonald's making sixty thousand dollars a year. So I, and I, and, and not to belabor this, but if your father gave you a bicycle when you were ten and he gave it to you, you leave it outside, it gets rained on, just whatever. If he said, you're gonna cut a bunch of grass and earn that money and buy that bicycle, it gets put in the shed. And what I mean with that is when you've got skin in the game, you tend to likely be, take more pride, more ownership, cause it's yours. No disrespect to anybody renting. There's great renters out there, and it's, we're a transient community. Sometimes, you're only here for a couple of years. But I think the long-term picture and the fear of a lot of Calvert Countyans is, somebody blows in one or two years, they got no skin in the game. I don't care if I take care of this apartment, if I put holes in it, if I do whatever, it's not mine. And I mean, you've seen that in human behavior. You're more likely to take care of something that's yours than that's something else. So I, you know, I, I believe the opportunity's still out there for that first-time home buyer, just going interest rates alone.
Yeah, I, I agree on a lot of points, Mike, but like, on anything, there's, there's, there's all sides of it, and what I say is you need a balance. I mean, about, my key word in life is balance, anything we do, and you, and you need a certain amount of everything, and, and, and it's not as easy as you think right now when it comes to that two hundred thousand dollar house. Go, go find that right now.
Well, that's a country problem right now. We're seeing a farm now where there's nothing nowhere.
And that's exactly my point. My point is the timing, even though it sounds great, okay, there's three percent interest. Interest can be back up to four and a half percent interest. Another part of that equation is, somebody pays three fifty for the house that should be two twenty-five right now, and they pay that, you just convince them, they went down to upside-down equity when interest goes back up to four and three-quarters. So that rent, I've told some people right now, rent somewhere and hold off. I tell them that when they're talking about buying from me, I'm like, it's a stupid time to buy. I have to build in the prices that, that are being charged to us.
And we saw that before with the bubble.
Absolutely.
This will come back. This phenomenon we're seeing will come back.
Hundred percent.
But these apartments are forever.
But, but I agree, but, but they're, but you, in, in any moment like that, a transitional period, that if you have a young police officer, school teacher, that they don't make, make that move, or they don't, you know, these are people, these are, you talk about workforce housing, you know, it's, it's that, it's a pivotal part of even workforce housing that gives them a transitional moment, that they might be in the rental for a year and a half, and then they might find that dream home in that Calvert County, and they might be able to, they got that second job, and they can afford that house in Oakland Hall or Long Beach, wherever it's gonna be, to make that next level. So I'm not saying, like, say, I'm, I'm just like you guys, a hundred percent, like, Calvert County is meant to stay rural. That's, that's what Calvert County has, has been, you know, built on, is that, and, and I, I think that there's a balancing act, and that's what we're trying to find. What's that right balancing act, and how, and how, how do you have a certain amount of this, you know, what I call the ecosystem of housing, just like you have an ecosystem of the environment. You need a certain amount of everything within reason to, to have a healthy overall.
But I think we're reaching that now, cause we didn't gain any more roads, but we put a whole lot of houses in a concentrated area. So, and you know, if you go back to, I want to say that road ordinance, Mary Beth, was that put in around eighty-three as well? I want to say, hasn't really been updated since then, and I could be misspeaking, but I want to say at the time, it was like out to one artery.
So I, I believe you're talking about the traffic study requirements, and I do believe um, there were some changes made to the road ordinance, whether or not they were traffic-related in two thousand and ten timeframe. Um, but that was a point I wanted to bring up. So this is one tool to use for where development goes in the county. Of course, the comprehensive plan is designed to take the development out of the rural areas, put it into the town centers, and so TDRs is just one tool that's, that you can use to manage that. The adequate public facilities, which you're talking about, traffic studies, those things can also be changed to achieve the same type of goals.
But the problem is, the issue that we've talked about, is that it's not an equitable transfer. And you're taking five TDRs from the rural area and allowing five apartments. So you just allowed five families with ten cars, five kids in the schools where you only had one. I understand, we're trying to protect rural areas, that's what we're trying to do, but it's not an equal transfer. When everybody keeps telling me, oh, we're just transferring development to the towns. No, we're not. We're creating additional density and adding to the total buildout of the county when we do that, because it's not an equal exchange. So, and I understand, we want to protect rural areas, nobody's more, thinks that's more important than I do, but there's also a trade-off, as Commissioner Hardison said, you know, people, you know, uh, believe that there is an onslaught of apartments, Mr. Gertz, because in the past three years, they've seen a thousand apartments where we didn't see any before that, and there are other projects coming. And uh, you know, for us, you know, it's a financial issue, to be honest. People don't want to talk about that either. You know, every time we build an apartment, as county government, we lose two thousand dollars a year. Every apartment, we lose two thousand dollars a year that has to be subsidized from money from somewhere else. So, you know, and my last question was, as I said, I had two. If TDRs are breaking these projects, we exempt senior housing, affordable housing, and low-income housing. We've not seen one senior housing project come that requires no TDRs. Why is that?
It's not a demand for senior housing in Calvert County. I mean, the, the.
If Jennifer Moreland was here right now, she would tell you there is a significant demand for senior housing.
I've heard it, but when anybody's looked at it and tried to do it, and financially, a lot of things have failed. Anything that basically came in, even, even the fifty-five and above, when, when TDRs were exempt, or, or, you know, fifty, whatever it was, that, all those projects were failing. They weren't, they were, they were starving to death. So I mean, I, look, I'm a farm kid, just like you, buddy. I, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm surely not the, uh, uh, an economics expert. I'm just going by what the, what the market, you know, kind of showed and told me, and I've done, I've tried to stay within the boundaries. Alls I would say, if you guys want to change those boundaries, just, just respect grandfathering, uh, which is, you know, something that, that, that you probably, you know, we spend millions of dollars getting these products. I've already bought TDRs. I went to the farming committee and bought seven hundred and fifty TDRs to support, early, to support projects that I'm in, and that's all I ask, if you, if you want to, you know.
And we respect that.
Yeah.
We understand that projects underway, you've spent a lot of money, and I don't think this, there's no intention this board to say tomorrow that that all changed.
And even Randy's, when you talk about even the fifty-fifty and going back, and when I'm gonna bring that, but the point is that, that's a project I bought for a friend of mine who, who, who's passed away, who his sons were screwed based on a contract he had with MBR that already went outside of those boundaries based on what they were hearing then, so now I'm in a project that I have, I'm contractually liable. So there's, there's a lot to it, is all I'm saying. There's a lot more than, it's so hard to grasp it for all of us in any of these situations. And I, I applaud you in every direction of saying, you know, keep Cal, keep Calvert country and, and maintaining the rural character of Calvert County. I just think that, you know, we, that some uh, of, of this type of product, you know, I lived in Tuxton View when I moved here. I lived in a, in a, a townhouse in, in, in Solomon's. That's when I moved here, and I only moved here, cause that option was available. And, 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 and that was when I was twenty-one years old, uh, to come here from the farms I grew up on in Rondell County, looking for a place to lay block and, and, and build a house, and that's kind of where it all started. So it just gives that person that beginning that chance. I think there's just a, finding that balancing act, and we have built a, a heavy load of single-family, because we did use to take the transfer development from the, from the farm here, and just plopped it right here. We put it next door, and that wasn't really the intent of it either, but, but, you know, it, it's, that's where we are, so.
Commissioner Gattway?
Mr. Gertz, I, I agree with you hands down that we shouldn't take away from projects that significant amounts has been invested to. That's not what this is about. It's not my intent in any way, shape, or form. When I see six hundred and eighty-nine units built within five. When I see six-hundred-and-eighty-nine units built within five years, I'm sorry, let me back up. Assuming that a text amendment change was made in two thousand and fifteen, it's gonna take at least a year to two years to get a project spun up. So from that point in time, from two thousand and seventeen to current, we're looking at six-hundred-and-eighty-nine apartments during that time that this specifically allowed. If we take that into consideration, that's a hundred-and-seventy-two units average per year, a hundred-and-seventy-two units, like Commissioner President mentioned, times two cars, times two extra kids in schools, et cetera. Whatever we take action on today, I anticipate that it's going to be two more years until the actual realization of what we did today takes full effect. So with that said, we're still looking, if we take action today, we're still looking at another two-hundred-plus units, actually, four-hundred-plus units, because it's two years. That's going to happen between now, if we make a decision today, four-hundred more units are already in the plans until this can get slowed down. And so that, I understand that. But by that point in time, in an eight-year period, we'll have put in a thou- oh, way over a thousand additional units, almost twelve-hundred units. And I think we're only at twenty, how many residences do we have in the county overall, twenty-four to thirty thousand?
Thirty-three thousand, I think, roughly, right?
I think that's a good number, yeah.
Okay, so we spent a decade and a half at a point-two percent growth, I think? And if we look at this, we're going to be increasing almost by five percent in eight years.
And Commissioner Gavitt, to your point, my trips to New York, and as you gentlemen, when you sit down with the bonding agencies, they look at that. And they say, what can you handle? And they don't want to see extreme growth because they know that we can't handle it. They have, they have liked a slow, methodical approach, because they know schools come with that, and firehouses, and, and, and the strain on everything else. So that's all in that big picture, too, going back to Commissioner Hans, it's financial, it's a way of life, and it's also financial where you just can't afford to grow too fast.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent, and felt that, obviously, we did that with single families in the, in the nineties, I mean, I remember all that, and the schools and that, I, I never see that problem again. I think we have the throttles, we put the throttles in place then, there's all kind of throttles, this is just one throttle.
Right.
The, the land, I think if you look at the land pieces, I mean, I've really, the realistic developable land pieces, is that's what you find, that there's just, there's not, this runaway. I, I agree with you, though, I, and I agree with what Mike said earlier, put what in place, what you want in place, because, you know, make, make sure other, other things don't kinda work their way around. But that the expansion of, of a town center, that's what we talked about, I think, has been the discussion the last few years. Buddy, you and I talked about it years ago, just when you, before you were in office, just about what's the need, or is it necessary, this and that? With TDRs then, it probably was, with the amount of TDRs, and if we weren't gonna do something else, or if we weren't gonna increase the dollar volume that was put towards the power program. You guys just did that, you guys just did that in July, and I've supported that a hundred percent. I, I would think that anybody on the, I know Wilson would get up here and say that from the development community, I was the one saying that had to happen, or ever.
That's because we figured out that for county government, it's cheaper to buy and retire those TDRs, to allow them to be used in a.
I, I agree a hundred percent.
House.
And I applauded it, and, and it's not, I was the only developer, I think, on the committee applauding that, and, and suggesting that, you know, in a sense, because I, I know it was needed. And then, so you have that throttle, there's a finite amount of TDRs. All these projects stop at, at that point, and not saying they're all gonna be used for, obviously, apartments in the meantime, or even townhouses are gonna be used for single families still out in the rural areas and all, although that's greatly been limited from the state of Maryland regulations, you know, they, they put, they put tiers in, so.
To that point, though, what's not being considered is, once water and sewer becomes more readily available, that changes the game as well. Because now, all of a sudden, with your setbacks, your, your water, your well, your sewer and all that, and that opens the door for so many other things as well. And then, going back to what I said before, where you have intentions, and you have the spirit of things, where somebody says, well, yeah, you know, you, you can't do that over there because water and sewer wasn't available, but now water and sewer is available, and well, you could put this, 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 and this. And so that's why Lusby Villas, with the water and sewer available, was able to do what it can do. If that was all, if that was all well and septic, wouldn't be happening like that.
But that was all, I mean, so even, where am I on Lusby Villa, you know, I just talk about that, like, I'm a single-family builder, been that my whole life. We went into this arena because everybody directed, they took us, they were ending our career in single-family homes as far as land and getting land where you, where, where you build that. So we actually looked at project and did what exactly with the state of Maryland, and what the Calver County Comprehensive Plan was asking us to do, you know, that's, so we, I'm saying we've done that. And I, and if that wants to be changed, if that wants to be changed upon this review, does not, fully support that and fully understand that. I just think, like, when you look at projects that got there, like, in, in particular that, if you put a needle in, in Lusby Town Center, that's it, you know? That's the center of it, and if you wanna put any high density anywhere, that's where it belongs, because it's in the center of a town center. And you do, the other side of this, we haven't even discussed, you do need a certain amount of residential, and I agree, I, I don't see, and, 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 Plains zoning, I don't know if they even support me on this, but I don't see more than three or four, uh, five thousand total units being built ever in Calver County, you know, which is a small, over a long time, and that, those TDRs are a finite part of that, you know, they, 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 there's a finite amount of them. And with that, you need a certain amount of, of growth and development to support the commercial that's here and also being proposed. I mean, so there, there, we do need a certain amount of, you know, strength for that, they, they, the, the new residents do help all businesses, not just ones that live right in that area, but whether they go to Stony's for dinner, whether they go to Brick for dinner, whether they go to the local auto shop and get their car worked on. So, uh, I think that's a small component of it, but I, I, I just don't think the residential build-out as is, and don't expand town centers, don't.
Well, Rodney, to that, to that point, and not to just take.
Glad to hear that.
Not to take an individual project, but you take the Lusby Villas, going back to the traffic study and how those ordinance were put in, you know, I know that area like the back of my hand.
Right, right, backyard.
But, yeah, I can, I could walk it blindfolded.
Right.
You can't get the cars out of there.
Yeah.
And you know there's no way under the sun to get the cars out of there, so you take that two-seventy-eight and you multiply the cars, now you got over five-hundred cars. What, and I'm not trying to beat on you, you worked within the rules, I'm not saying you did not, or anything like that, but when, when eighty-three, when that changed, when that was in two thousand and five, nobody lived here. So growth has come, and the rules have changed, the stress on the bridge, everything else like this, now you take those five-hundred-and-some-odd cars, let's just say a hundred of them have to be to work at seven o'clock in the morning, how do you get them out of there? And that's, I think, so many people's big concern is, how do you move from place to place to place? I'm not questioning, you know, ethics or anything at all like that, it's not like that. But when that mindset was put in in eighty-three, I was in tenth grade. One bus picked up Drumpoint Ranch Club in Cove Point, one high school bus, now think about that, nobody ever dreamed that there would be three to four buses on a road. So because the dynamics have changed so much, and this, and the zoning did not move to keep up with it, has now put us to where all of a sudden, we've got on slide seven or whatever there, all these and going, oh, my goodness, what's going on? And I understand what you're saying, to your point, you were said, hey, look, you can't build in the farming area anymore, you're telling us this is what to do, this is what we did, now you're saying something different. It's because it was not a slow approach, it was, you did, it wasn't like ten apartments or twenty apartments, it's a thousand. And I get it, that's business, I'm a business guy, too, I'm gonna make a whole lot more money putting a thousand there than I am ten. That's just business, I'm a big fan of saying, trust people and trust things to do what they do, that's what business does. But there's a, an effect to it, and the effect is, okay, the business does what it has to do, and I respect that, I, when I go to my store, I do what business has to do.
Sure.
But there is an effect that comes from everything. Does that business, when it does what it does, does it affect what the county has to do to take care of that, to Commissioner Hans's point, with the two thousand dollars? Does Patuxent High School handle it, does Dow Elementary handle it, does Solomon's Rescue Squad handle it? Those things are not a business's concern.
Yeah.
And, and I respect what you're saying, like, going forward, if this is what we do, whatever, but that is what led us to where we are today.
Absolutely, and I, and I, it's your guys' right, and your guys' spot, and I fully respect that, that there's, as this board, if you wanna change direction on how projects are moved, like I say, I just ask that you respect what's, what's in process, and, and then, and then make adjustments. Don't expand town center, I just don't think that's a, it's not as runaway problem, you know, right now, because of landmass, and if you really look at, and I think P and Z would, would support that with Mary Beth looking at that, 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 of the, of the potential pieces there to, to, to kinda overreact and go the, you know, to, to, well, it's your choice to do whatever you want to.
So we need to let Mr. Freeland come up and talk.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Gertz, we appreciate. Sunshine and Mr. Freeland.
Yeah, I know. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing us to, to speak this morning, I'm Wilson Freeland from Prince Frederick. You know, I can tell you pretty much without a doubt of this board, we're to, uh, vote this morning to change the requirement of TDRs, from that tier within the town center, that not only the committee members that supported the ag community, um, on this committee, but the ag community in whole would, would support that. The, um, the discussion about, um, about having, um, the number of TDRs, um, I think it was slide thirteen and fourteen. I'm, I'm not sure that I would agree that there was a consensus among the, uh, uh, committee that, um, that it'd be punted over until the consultant's, uh, uh, information was presented to you. But, uh, you know, realistically and reasonably, uh, you've spent a lot of taxpayers' money to pay for a consultant to take a look at the Prince Frederick Town Center master plan. And she should at least, uh, review what the draft is that the consultant is presenting to you. Um, I, I, I've seen a draft, and I see that the consultant at least claims that, um, what they're proposing would increase the demand for, for TDRs. Not sure how they, um, figure on doing that, but, um, it would be, uh, it would behoove you to at least, uh, take a look and, and see what's being proposed. An example of this morning, you did the text amendment twenty-one oh-one A, I believe, um, the consultant is proposing the same reduction in, in density as, as what you did this morning. So, uh, you know, just because you are using the taxpayers' money to, to pay this consultant, I'd urge you to just take a look at what they're proposing, but, you know, if, if you decide to move that scale, the ag community supports you.
Thank you.
The, uh, uh.
You're not done.
Yeah, you can't get away that quick. Mr. Freeland, thank you for the support on that. We also have spent a lot, I understand, a lot of taxpayer dollars by purchasing the TDRs and putting them into the program. And I personally think, as a layperson, as a citizen, giving it another tidbit of instruction to the master plan, the people doing the master plan, saying, encouraging them to incorporate this into the plan is better now than after the master plan has been completed. And a motion on this today, I believe, would be the exact same motion that we just made a moment ago, which would be, not that this is going to be an immediate impl- uh, implementation, but this is going to be, at that point, directing, planning, zoning to take the next steps in the process. And that this would not go into effect today, and going back to Mr. Gertz's position, it is not something that, it, it's gonna take years for whatever action we take today, it's gonna take years for that to come to full fruition. If we don't take action today, it's gonna continue, and I, and I appreciate your, your, the ag committee's support on that.
I, thank you, uh, you know, I, I have seen several studies and surveys, um, that indicate majority of county residents support our preservation programs, whether it be the ag preservation or, or something similar. So, um, you know, y- your actions, um, will be supported by those folks as well.
So, Mr. Freeland, what I've seen of the Prince Frederick Master Plan report so far, the consultant actually made a comment one night, whether it's in the written report yet or not, was that we eliminate the requirement for TDRs in the town centers. So do you think we should wait and adopt that recommendation, where there are no TDR requirements in the town center?
So, um, I, I've read, um, the draft several times. Um, there are some aspects of the draft that I agree with, and there are some aspects that I believe they're dead wrong on. But because you spent the money for this consultant, you ought to take a look at, at what they're proposing.
And what I believe you're referring to is, at one point when we were working with the Planning Commission on options, that was an option, but I don't believe that's the option they chose to move forward to put into the master plan.
And his suggestion that the build-out of the town center would use up all the TDRs is that we build it all out.
And it was using, I think Jenny uses the, uh, term layer cake, so that you would want the most development in the center or the core of the town centers, and then you would pay the least amount of TDRs there, and then as you go out in the rings, you would be using more TDRs.
But the same consultant also said, on the issue of traffic, that if it's not as bad as Washington DC, you don't have a problem. The consultant that we're paying all these dollars to, Mr. Freeland, you agree with his assessment that if it's not as bad as Washington DC, we don't have a traffic problem?
That is one of the items that, that we totally are, are at odds on. You know, uh, when I was in elementary school, if I had to come home and told my parents that I had a failing grade, they wouldn't have looked at me and said, well, that's okay. And, um, you, your consultant has, uh, taken a look at some of the, uh, intersections and, uh, made the comment, it's okay that, that they fail, or, or used a creative workaround to, uh, to, uh, offset that fail.
And that's accurate as well, because of the timeline, too. They take a twenty-four-hour approach, we all know, hey, it's five in the morning till nine, and it's three to seven. And if analyzed through that scope, boy, that's a completely different pair of optics.
Absolutely, that's, that's working the numbers to.
And, and gentlemen, I know we could go forever in a day, are we looking for a motion today?
We, we are, uh, just, Mr. Freeland, you know, that, that example shows my confidence in the consultant, because we hire consultants that develop Columbia and Howard County, and many different communities in Virginia that I don't think any of us wanna model. But we hire those consultants, and they say what they say, because they've designed Columbia and Waldorf, and they think that's what everybody wants. When we hear from the citizens, they do not want that. So I've thrown away money before, I'll throw away money again, and so for consultants, I have no concern about throwing away that money, because at the end of the day, the citizens of the Calver County should get what they want. And we're hearing loud and clear what they don't want, so.
Mr. President.
The president, thank you, Mr. Freeland, for your time, we appreciate you coming in.
Uh, quick question, when was the, um, consultant hired for that?
Back when we started the Prince, uh, Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan, which was shortly after the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan. So two thousand and nineteen, twenty, around there.
Motion.
Well, I, I would like to. I would like to throw this out there, in reference, slide nine, please.
As we're flipping to slide nine, any of the commissioners that might hold TDRs may wish to consider whether they wanna recuse from discussion and debate.
Once we get there.
Thank you.
Okay.
I had to get my questions out.
On, on slide nine, the ask a month or so back was that, excuse me. Reference slide nine, the ask from a month or two back was to revert the sliding scale back to pre-two thousand and fifteen requirements, which was five-five-five-five-five, is that correct?
That's not correct, so it was five-five-five.
Right.
For all units prior to two thousand and fifteen, the sliding scale that was put into effect was one for apartments, two for townhouses, three for single family. The text amendment that didn't go through was based on the bed, number of bedrooms. So one bedroom would be one, two bedrooms would be two, and that is what.
So currently in place, we have the five-three-two-one-one-one, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and what, after our ask of reverting back, if that was gonna be the, I'll, for simplicity, I'll use that, the suggestion was the five-four-three-three-two-one, is that correct?
The suggestion from our last meeting in October with the TDR committee was to stay five-three-two-one-one-one.
Five-four-three, I'm sorry, repeat that?
Five-three-two-one-one-one, to keep what we have today.
That was a suggestion from the TDR committee?
That's correct.
Where is the proposed TDRs, that second category, where is that, and where is that coming from?
That was the text amendment, that was in two thousand and twenty.
Two thousand what?
Twenty, last year, when we, yes.
That the Planning Commission did not.
Right.
That did, that, that got put forth, but it never got approved?
That's correct.
Okay, I would personally, I, I know I've seen. I would personally, I know I've seen enough in four years at 689 units, dwelling units being built in this county, knowing that it's going to take whatever action we take at this point in time, it's going to take a minimum of two years for that to fully come to fruition through the grandfathers and everything else that are out there in order to make everything fair and equitable. We've seen what can happen in four years. We know and can anticipate that this is going to continue for a year and a half to two years. I would like to see that we put in a 554444 position. Either all fives, or if they're coming down to attached dwellings, they can go with four. That's where my position is, because we've spent a lot of money on TDRs and a lot of taxpayer money.
So, you're saying, so if I look at it from there, single-family, stay in five?
If they're detached, they're five; if they're attached, they're four. Regardless of bedroom, of the amount of bedrooms.
So, I think it's time for me to go.
Okay, and then, and then bringing the one, two, and three up to five, correct?
No, I'm saying anything detached, which is the first two lines, would require five TDRs.
Okay.
Anything detached, I'm sorry, anything attached, which would be a duplex, a three-bedroom, I mean, multifamily dwellings, anything that's attached to something else, which is currently where the 2111 is or the 3321, I would suggest those go to four. I would support them going to four at this point in time and pushing that out to the next step of the process. Because like I said, we've spent a lot of money on TDRs, which is a whole lot more money than we've spent on consultants over the course of time. And with the finite amount of TDRs out there, I think that we need to use them wisely to the best of the ability. And as has been mentioned, the cost associated with this would be less to the individual on a per-day basis or per-month basis, would be $100 to $200 a month roughly.
And so, to clarify, five, five, and then the rest fours?
Correct.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Mr. Vice President, I would like to make a motion to direct staff to, let me rephrase this, I would like to make a motion to direct staff to schedule a work session with Planning Commission regarding the TDR sliding scale, suggesting that it go to the 554444 position.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a second discussion.
Yes. Mary Beth, could you explain more to who will be grandfathered in, at what part of the process they would be grandfathered in?
Sure. So, while we're going through the text amendment process, there is no change. So, until we get to the end of the process, it would be at that time in the adopting resolution or ordinance that actually adopts the official changes, we could write language in there to say exactly if you have, we'll choose, we'll see where those projects are. Say they've received concept approval, we'll put in the language, anybody that's received concept approval. If they've got site plan approval, we'll write in, you know, we'll base it on the projects that are in and bring those suggestions forward to you.
But nothing going forward, though?
Right.
Correct.
Yes. It would only be, the grandfathering applies to X, Y, and Z, and then everyone else has to come under the new regulations.
Okay.
So, I've been quiet, been listening to everyone. The findings of fact for me 32 years ago was the first Prince Frederick Master Plan The comprehensive plan calls to promote growth in the town centers and retain our rural character. That's a paradox from my perspective. I attended the TDR Committee meeting in October, and what I heard, we had members of Keep Calvert Country on that committee. And what I heard was the consensus at the time was to continue to allow, let's see, I'm sorry, retain the current TDR sliding scale. That's what I heard. So, we have to make a decision today, and let's see where the motion goes. And, but I have a proposition alternately. So, all those in favor of the motion?
If I could ask, what is your...
Well, no, you got the motion first before he makes this motion. Is that what you're saying right?
Yeah, I mean, if this, yes, if it passes, you're good to go.
The, real quick, before we call for a vote, if I could interject, the mission statement of the Calvert County Government will, and this is sitting right up here on my desk, the third item is preserve Calvert County's environment, heritage, and rural character. The next bullet point is foster opportunities for responsible and sustainable, sustainable residential growth and economic development. Those are two of the five bullet points in the mission statement of Calvert County Government. Thank you. Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, so I would agree with Steve. So, I mean, we, for years and years, we've tried to protect the rural community and focus on the growth in the town centers. Now, what we're doing here is we're saying, "We don't want growth anywhere," which is, if that's where everybody wants to go, that's fine. But it's, I mean, we're just, if we go to the scale that you're proposing, then there won't be anything like Mr. Gertz had said. So, I mean, you'd almost be better off just saying, "No more growth. We're not allowing any more projects," because at that scale, to require four TDRs for a one-bedroom multi-unit is, there's not. Nobody's going to propose to build them.
I disagree with that. They would, they would cost more, but they would. Every time I go and talk to anybody, they're saying, "Slow it down, slow it down, slow it down." They continuously say, "Slow it down." I'm going back to the numbers. We had a point, and will somebody please, if I'm incorrect, I apologize, but I think I'm pretty close, we had, I believe, a 4% to 5% population growth over the course of the previous decade at the last census. Is that somewhat accurate?
Commissioner Mark Willis, County Administrator, was .46, .46 over the last 10 years.
Was it .46% per year over the last four years?
Average over the last 10 years. .46 average over the last 10 years.
So, less than 1%, half of a percent growth on average over the last 10 years. That era and that census does not cover half of the amount of apartments that are currently slated or put in in the last four years.
It's a little misleading, because it does not include with what you're seeing today. If you take the whole, full 10 years, for the first six to seven years, it was hardly anything.
Or even a negative.
Right. So, when you take and put that in there, that's...
So, my position on it is, if we don't take action, we will go from that .46 annual percent of growth to possibly up to a 2% to 3% growth in the county annually.
It would be very hard to sustain.
If there isn't some kind of check put in place at this point in time, because as I've said, whatever check we, whatever check and balance we put in place today, we're not going to realize the gains of that for at least a year and a half to two years.
It would be hard to sustain, in my opinion.
Right. And we are looking at significant costs for additional schooling, significant costs for additional fire rescue, I mean, significant costs. We are budgeting or building our way out of our budget of how we can provide high-quality, effective, and efficient services to all Calvert County citizens. That's the second bullet point on the mission statement. So...
So, I would say if we're requiring this amount of TDRs, in most people's minds, it would think, "Hey, we're really helping the farmers out. More farmers will be able to sell them." But then it could completely backfire if a developer says, "This is too many. We can't do it. Project can't move forward. We can't get the loan for it," like Rodney had said earlier. He had a good point, "It's only a dollar a day," but it's the builder that has to foot the money in the front part of that bill, which completely throws the project off. So, in the long run, we're not really helping the farmer if they're not buying the TDRs.
Well, that's your PAR program.
Well, that's the PAR program. We are continually to buy the TDRs ourselves.
And if we get more aggressive with PAR, I think there's a long-term savings county-wise.
Right. And there is no loss, immediate loss, to the builder, developer, because we're saying that those projects that have that money spent on them, you know, we're not trying to shut those down. We're trying to shut down what's looming in the future that has not been brought to planning and zoning yet, or something along those lines. You know, to some degree, I want to say the damage, not literally, but the damage has been done, but that doesn't mean we can't stop further damage from occurring, is my position on that. I'm not trying to shut anything down that's currently in works. Please understand, I'm not trying to do that. I'm trying to, at this point, take an action now that will, that will see the fruition of in a couple of years, because if we end up with another 1,000 to 1,500 kids in the next 18 months, that's a lot.
And I don't want to drag this out all day, but that doesn't include the Kerwin Report, which is going to be a major, major change to the school system. If we have to come up with another 20% more teachers, because they're talking 80%, excuse me, 20% reduction in class time, the teachers are not even there to choose from. We've already seen schools that need to be built that we cannot build them today, existing schools. So, sometimes you have to put the brakes on, reassess, see where you are, and, you know, we went through spurts. We went through spurts in the 80s and the 90s, and we've seen spurts in the entire country is going through a spurt. I think right now, you put the brakes on, see where you are, let dust settle, take a breath, and try to proceed at a very thought-out approach.
Any further comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Next idea.
Let's go forward with the original intent, proposed text amendment 20-02. Proposed TDRs required on slide nine with the scale presented for 543321. And what this does is basically ties it to the amount of bedrooms per multifamily dwelling moving forward.
Mr. Vice President, I make a motion to approve this scale the way it is proposed.
I'll second for discussion.
Sorry, Commissioners.
With all respect, I don't...
Okay.
You're not actually procedurally in a position where you can approve this today, except to approve it to send it to work session with the Planning Commission?
All right.
Right. Thank you.
Okay.
Is there any way I can convince you to come up on the bottom two at all?
No.
And this is a work session that's going to the Planning Commission. There's going to be another apple, a bite of the apple.
Another bite at the apple after this.
Yes, sir.
And I would be interested to see what the Planning Commission has to say also.
In order to get it to move forward, I'm sorry, is there ever been a second on the motion?
Yes.
Okay. In order to get it to move forward, knowing that it would be coming back to us again for discussion and final approval and/or to bump it back, I clearly am not happy with the amount of the TDRs, but I am happy with the fact that they are going in the right direction, and that is to increase them. I could support this, knowing that we have another discussion point later on on it.
Any further discussion?
I just don't think until we get serious push on those bottom three that we're going to achieve the goal. I'm fine for all input, one all input. Does this lock us in? I know I won't vote for, I can tell you today that I won't vote for how it is today when it goes for the final vote.
I agree.
So, but to get it to the Planning Commission, I know you need a consensus, a motion or something.
Correct.
So, you need something to take there.
Yes. So, we take it, whatever your recommendation is, to the Planning Commission, then we send it out for agency comments, then we take it back to the Planning Commission before we come to you with a work session to move us forward to a public hearing.
For that purpose alone, I'll vote to move it forward, but I know I can't vote. I just seen where it goes. I just, I mean, I have the luxury now of seven years here, you know, the mistakes I have made in the past and the shortcomings I've had. I've had a chance to see the movie before. So, I know how the movie ends.
Commissioner Hart, also, although the motion failed, you and I are on record for the higher requirements.
Well, I...
So, we are on record of supporting that, and so that all the other entities and the Planning Commission and everybody else knows that you and I are on that position, and hopefully they will also take that into consideration, that it was a 2-2 vote that failed.
Well, I take pride in analyzing that budget very, very well. I believe it is our responsibility, and as we've had many discussions in the past, Commissioner Nutter taught me something, boy, and I'm a slow learner, but he always said, "What you do over here affects over there." And this is one of those things. This, make no mistake about it, this is one of those things, as is Kerwin, as in so many other things, that that page right there, if left unchecked and on the path that we have been on, it's going to affect everything else that we do and make it very unstable. We cannot sustain it. So, I would hope that every, all of, everybody who has a stake in this would really look at, and also too, and I know, we've been on this way too long, we need to wrap this up, but there's the bigger picture, too. Water and sewer. We have, what did we hear just last week? How many systems failed? You know, we, I mean, we have water and sewer issues all up and down the county, from places on the water to even in-town centers. Look at the issues Dunkirk has had with water and sewer and all that. So, you know, I get it, I get it, but we, and we have one road, we don't have any infrastructure in place. So, I mean, I'm sorry, and I beat this horse to death, I'm just hoping that everybody takes that whole picture into consideration. And I'll vote to move it forward, but as far, as long, but that's it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 401. Mr. President, in the background?
Hey, Mr. Vice President, I have to excuse myself. I have a meeting that I must attend. I apologize.
Let the record be known. Yes, sir. Commissioner Hart is leaving.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the next item on the agenda is a presentation by Department of Technology Services.
Good morning, gentlemen. Also joining me today is Mary Beth for Planning and Zoning as well.
She's been busy today.
She has.
So, my name is Amy Lawson. I'm the Director of Technology Services for Calvert County, and the purpose of today's presentation is to provide you all with an update into the efforts that our teams have been working together on to improve the permitting process here in Calvert County. Next slide, please. The items that we'd like to cover today include the issues that we originally looked to address, power fixes, the current status, future plans, and then open it up for any questions. Next slide. So, the issues that we addressed. The first was the existing separate buildings and grading applications were inefficient and required duplicate efforts. Residential and commercial applications were completely separate processes. Determining the status of the building and grading applications was cumbersome, and it was confusing for both the customers and the permit staff. A linear review process made it difficult to staff, for staff to manage their own workloads. Things were sequential. And finally, an existing application, the existing application... application, or the existing application workflows would be difficult to implement in the online permit application portal. The workflows that we actually had in place would not translate into what the technology was able to do. Next slide. Here's what we did to fix the problems. First, we combined the building and grading applications into a single application, both residential and commercial. This eliminated duplicated, duplicated effort and created a simple, more transparent process. Citizens can now easily follow the status of their applications, staff can easily respond to questions, and the payment process is now streamlined. We can, we created concurrent review process. Each organization now receives the application at the same time. So instead of things going one by one by one, now it shoots out to many, at many, many, um, reviews at the same time. And this avoids the delays that was created by the previous lineal process, and it, that decreases the time for the applicants. And then we also improved the online workflow. We created a cleaner, more streamlined application workflow that makes it easier for citizens to use. So our current status, the combined building and grading permit is expected to be ready for testing in the next two to three weeks. Development of the online portal continues. Using the portal, citizens can view all existing permits and applications now. Payment can also be made online for existing building, residential, electrical, plumbing, use and grading permits, and we are providing staff with training. Next slide. What are we working on in the future? A portal-friendly configuration will be completed to allow other applications to be submitted online. You can see here the other applications that we'll be working on, um, that we're currently working on, including the use permit, home occupation permit, electrical and plumbing, site plan, replat, subdivision, utility, public works agreement, and road. Our future plans, we plan to work on a new application type to be configured, um, and made available for the online submittals, and those include the Board of Appeals, Forest Conservation, Architectural Review, Critical Area Forestation, Water and Sewer, Public Works Agreement, and Trade License. Any questions?
So I think one of the issues that happened to me, they were supposed to notify me when certain things were done, and either it went out or I didn't, is there some way that we can, so that they send it, that they know it actually did come to me?
So one of the changes that was made a, as a direct result of the incident that happened with you, Commissioner Hans, was is that now...
Which has happened to many people.
And it has. It's not just you. It, it did happen in the past to several folks, is that, um, we made the application easier for citizens to go in and check the status of their application. So at any point in time, the citizen can go in, look to see where their application is, what, you know, where they, where it is in the process. So there's much more transparency than there was in the past.
Right, because the issue was, and I've heard it from other people, their, their permit was approved, but they didn't get the notification that it's ready to be picked up. And in my case, eventually I just called, because I thought, "This thing should be ready." And, "Oh yeah, it's been ready for weeks." Well, I didn't know that, so...
So the system does send out emails, um, at certain ti, um, milestones, or what they called. When you hit a certain milestone, then you'll get an email, and if the email address isn't put in at input, then of course the emails can't be sent out. So, um, I, the permit technicians have been going that extra step to make sure if there isn't a perm, an email address provided, that they call and say, "Could you give us an email?" And if they don't have one, then they're going to have to manually either follow it online or make the phone calls.
And so now, when I make, or if someone makes an application, it automatically goes to the different departments that are, have to review it. And so if I go on to look and see my, track it, I'll see if X department has already done what they need to do, and Y, and Z, and...
Sure, you could see an approval, you could see comments, you could see still under review. Yes, you will...
But somebody in the department will track that to make sure it's moving as it's supposed to?
So that, they have dashboards, which, when they log in in the morning, it shows them the permits that they have open for review. So yes, um, and once they approve it, then it comes off their dashboard, and they move on to the next one.
And everybody has a time, a date, which they're supposed to have it processed. So on their dashboard, it's going to tell them it's got to be done by X or...
I do not believe we have time limits on them.
Because I thought I've heard people in the past say, "Well, I've got thirty days to approve your permit," so...
Yeah, I hear that a lot.
Yeah.
So...
And then they wait till the thirtieth day.
The twenty-ninth day, yeah.
There's road plan review, there's subdivision review, those all have, like, thirty-day, ninety-day, sixty-day, um, permits. We don't, our expectation in planning and zoning is if you can't get to it in two days, you're making a phone call, or you're at least triaging it to see if they're, you're missing anything. Um, but each department can be different, and no, I don't believe there are time limitations on permit reviews.
Is there a way we could put limits or, or, or goals, and then have it where it, it pops up on people's screen?
Right, again, alert.
This one is getting close to the deadline, to kind of alert them and say, oh, because there's, there's, I mean, people's desk, I mean, there's stuff piled on it. It's very easy for somebody to get lost in the shuffle, I would say. Is there a way we could set something up like that, where they could get alerts and say, "This application was submitted on this date. We're now getting to that sixty-day mark," you know?
Um, so technologically, anything is possible, right?
Right.
The, the question just is, is, on the policy side of the House, the policies would have to be put in place as to how long each application has, and then we could work together to create, um, the system, to, to be able to program the system, to be able to send alerts. But that's, that's more of a policy question.
I hear it all the time. I can get a permit for a pool in St. Mary's County in X amount of days, and it takes this long over here, and, you know, I hear that all the time.
Or even if they were required to update the client weekly or bi-weekly, I don't know what the timeframes are, but a reasonable time to at least notify the client that, you know, "I'm still working on your permit," because as a client, you're just out there, you're wondering what the heck's going on. And I know I can track it to see, but for the employee, at least they know, they're going to get a reminder that, "Hey, Commissioner Weems' permit, you know, is laying on my desk. I should get to that, because it's been here X number of days."
Sure. And the other thing that we're working on with the concurrent reviews, if one department wants a change that's going to affect the other departments, it's got to go through a reroute process. And what we want to do is when we get to that point, when the permit gets revised and comes back in, we want to be able to put that higher in the review process, because it's going to be a quicker review. They're at, you know, addressing comments that you had. So, I mean, it's, it's going to be hard to say you only have a certain number of days to do a permit, if then you have the reroutes coming in, and we want to do those quicker, and, and there's a lot of moving parts.
It's just a reminder for, you know, our staff that it doesn't get under the pile and get forgotten, and people are coming in on top, and you're doing those, and you forget the one at the bottom. It's, I think it's what I think is...
Can the applicant go into the system and see where it's at?
Yes.
Oh, they can do that?
Yes.
But he would just see that it's on Mary Beth's desk.
Right.
He would know where it is in her, you know, triage.
But they don't hesitate to call.
Well, that's what I was saying. If you could eliminate those calls, it would be huge to, if they knew more, then maybe you wouldn't get a zillion calls, you know?
Now, if it's been reviewed and there's comments in there, I, I believe they can see the comments.
Because I tell everybody to call you.
And he gives out the number, too. Any other questions? Nope. Well, we're making progress, which is good. Anything we can do to speed up the process for our citizens is a major step forward, so thank you for that.
Thank you. We're going to continue to work on this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next and last presentation that we have is with Office of County Administrator. Oh, it's the Comcast update. I'm excited.
You're excited.
Yeah. This is good stuff. We don't get to talk about good stuff very often.
Hopefully this is all good news for you.
Unless Chris has bad news.
Chris is not allowed to bring bad news to you anymore.
Is the Barstow area done yet?
Not this Chris.
Is Barstow done yet?
We don't want to hear that.
Uh, we're going to go over that table. We'll show you where everything is.
We're going to require Comcast to buy TDRs whenever they do an installation, for every pole.
Alrighty, good morning.
You should require TDRs to get Comcast.
Yeah, there you go. There you go.
That'll get rid of them.
Commissioner Hans, you should tell, uh, Mr. Comer that there's a satisfied Lion Club member last night, right?
There is. And there's one that didn't realize that, buying Calvert County didn't have cable. But there were some happy people there when I told them about our plan. And then they're all yelling, "Are you going to do Pots Point Road?" "Yeah, it's on the list. I can't tell you when, but it's on the list."
Who said that?
I know Cal's story.
All right. It's hard to follow that. So, good afternoon. I'm Linda Vasallo, Deputy County Administrator. To my left is Ashley Staples Reed. She works with us in the Administrator's Office, and Ashley has been taking lead on the project. And to my right is Chris Comer, who is the Director of Government and Regulatory Affairs in the area. So, next slide, please. Excuse me. Today's purpose is we're going to provide, um, an update on where we are with Comcast cable buildout in the county. This is the second of our quarterly updates that are planned. Next slide. And I just, I know we show this slide every time, but I just want to remind the public that cable franchise agreements, uh, provide provision of cable service in the exchange for use in our right-of-way. They do not address broadband or internet service. Next slide, please. Um, today is, this chart just kind of shows where we are from our original twenty-eighteen franchise agreement to what this board has done to improve that franchise agreement. So additionally, originally, we had fifteen home-per-miles density, and anybody beyond that density or three hundred feet could not get service without paying for that service. So in August of twenty-one, uh, the board voted to extend the length of the standard cost re-drop from a hundred and twenty-five feet to beyond three hundred feet. So basically, what that means is that anybody that wants cable gets it at no cost. Um, you, the original, we went over through that. Uh, and then it also removed the, um, customer, customer contribution and cost-sharing requirement. And also, uh, we are looking at requesting the board's actions today to reimburse constituents who have actually made that capital infrastructure investment, and reimbursing them if they'd done that between January first of this year and December thirty-first of this year. And we will get to the cost of that in just a few minutes. Next slide, please. Um, just to recap, recap, our full buildout to date in April of twenty-one, we approved the buildout from thirty, three hundred feet to the right-of-way for the franchise agreement, and we immediately began work with Comcast to award that approach. And then again, in August of twenty-one, we identified additional funding from the American Rescue Plan Act, and the board voted to remove that three-hundred-foot limitation, thereby making cable service available to everyone. I just want to repeat, there's no charge to the constituents based on that action this board took. Next slide, please. The funding was originally budgeted in FY twenty-two for full build, buildout. ARPA funds and state grants were available at the time, and they continue to make full kill, buildout cable, the possible, possible of cables, excuse me. Uh, the Governor's Office provided a one-point-four-million-dollar grant to help pay for the additional six-hundred-sixty-plus homes and the additional three-hundred-foot driveway drops. So the combined projects right now, total, the total construction estimate today is still three-point-seven million. Uh, the state's put in two-point-two-five. Our current contribution is, has remained at one-point-four, with Comcast putting in four-hundred-six into the program thus far. I just want to remind you, these numbers will change. We've budgeted for those changes through ARPA funding for this fiscal year and next fiscal year that you've already approved. Next slide, please. I'm actually going to turn it over to Ashley, and she's going to walk you through the estimated construction schedule.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, so what I'm going to do is give you guys some updates on, on what we're doing as far as phases go with Comcast, and Chris, feel free to interject if you have any updates or any input that you wanted to add on. Um, so the first slide that you're seeing right now is, um, a similar slide that we presented in August to give you an update on our Phase One and Phase Two. These are currently in construction or currently on the map for construction, um, with Comcast. So if you look at the very bottom, Barstow Road is on that map, on that list, I'm sorry. Uh, we have a hundred and seventy-three homes currently in that buildout, so it is a very big buildout. Um, that's why it is considered just Phase One in itself. The remaining line items are going to be your Phase Two. You can see on the chart that we have completed some, some areas, and again, Chris, if you wanted to attest to any of them, certainly chime in. Um, there are some that have been done earlier than scheduled. Um, there are some that are lagging a little bit as far as, um, projected dates, and that is usually just due to permitting issues, um, as far as, um, receiving them in a timely manner. Um, so, do you guys have any questions about Phases One and Two?
Yes. With, with Barstow being the, clearly the highest number of homes being affected, is there anything that can be done to get that done any quicker? So, currently, there, many of the residents are using different devices that are just failing and are not working. They can't work from home, kids can't do any virtual stuff. Um, I just, if there's any way that could be done any quicker?
I, I think we're seeing a, a lot of things ramped up. We're, we're certainly trying to do this as quickly as possible. Where we are now is, Barstow's around eighteen miles of new construction.
Mm-hmm.
I want to say ten miles is aerial and, and eight miles is underground, more or less. For the aerial, for the underground, we're waiting for, uh, for permits, we're putting in for permits for those, and we're going to start building that, uh, you know, right away. That, that's the easier piece. The more challenging piece is, is the aerial, where we have to get permission from, uh, SMECO to attach to those poles.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we, we submitted, uh, poll applications for three hundred different poles as part of that project. Um, we, we have a, uh, ride-out scheduled with SMECO and Verizon to, to go out, and they, they have to identify which poles, if we, if we have to replace a pole, uh, or if they have to make adjustments, because there's requirements as to how much SAG you can have on those lines.
Right.
So, we're, so that ride-out is scheduled. Once we, once we finish that, then we'll know what kind of make-ready work has to be done. And then if there is a new pole, everyone has to transfer their lines to that new pole, you know, before we can come in and, and, and add anything else. So...
Right.
That's, that's the, that's the wild card in all this.
I know there's a lot involved.
Once, once, once we get the, the green light, uh, you know, for, that we can move forward with, with attaching, you know, within, within six months, you know, we, we should have everything done. So, so, right, right now, and, and we did have, I've, I've had two good meetings with SMECO. They understand how important this project is to the county.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they're, they're working with us to try and expedite this. They have someone, uh, who's going to, you know, a field person who's going to be joining our weekly calls with Calvert County as needed, so that they can provide updates as to, you know, where things are and SMECO's in to make this happen. You know, of course Verizon's another piece of, of that puzzle, because usually if, you know, if you have to move power lines, you know, SMECO will go fir, power will go first, and then, and then telephone, uh, second. So, so we're, we're trying to work closely with everyone. But as soon as we get that green light, we, you know, we're, we're prepared to, to kind of finish that, that remaining piece. But people will start to see that the underground construction, you know, near their homes, uh, out in that area, uh, very soon.
And based on your schedule, you're estimating to have Barstow Road done by June of twenty-two, right? So, if we don't hit any...
You don't see any chances of that going further past June, do you?
Uh, you know, right now, no.
Anything is possible.
But again, the, the wild card is the, the make-ready piece.
Right.
If they come back, and there's, you know, a significant amount of make-ready work, you know, you know, we, we have to pay to have all that make-ready work done. It's, it's at their discretion as, you know, how quickly they can do that work.
Right.
So, so i- it's just hard to, as soon as we get that green light, you know, hopefully, you know, at the next update in January, uh, I, I'll be able to give you a, a, a much more...
Right.
...concrete answer.
Okay. Good deal.
Commissioner McConkey, I just want to let you know and the rest of the board that we will be notifying Barstow by, probably by mail, postcard, something, so that they know the status.
If you could explain all, like he just did, you know, because when you hear with all that's involved, it's, it's much more understandable than, "We just want cable, and they don't understand why they're not, they don't have it."
Absolutely.
I mean, it's...
What do you mean, you can't run it tomorrow?
So the, the initial goal is to send a, um, first-time letter to everybody in the buildout to let them know that, um, the projected plans, and then we intend to send a second letter to those that are going to be affected by the underground building. Um, as Chris mentioned, it's about that eight-mile area. Um, so those residents that are going to be affected by that underground building will receive a second letter indicating that, you know, Comcast is going to be in the area doing some underground building within the next few weeks. Just be on the lookout. Call with any questions. So. Um, and then if you can look at the map, uh, the chart, the remaining of the projects are a little smaller, but still smaller communities that are going to get service with the projected dates. Um, the majority of them are going to be done within the next few months. So Phases One and Two are going to be a total homes of three-thirty-five. And next slide.
What would be the, what, Pots Point, no poles, I guess it's all underground down there, right?
I, I, I'm not sure.
It's a pretty rural area. I don't think there's any poles, if I can remember. Um...
There may be some getting to Pots Point.
Apparently they're Phase Three.
That ain't what that thing said.
Darryl, can you go to the previous slide?
Were they on the previous slide?
Pots Point is in Phase Two.
Oh, yeah, there it is. I'm sorry. I missed it.
Yeah, they're Phase Two, yeah.
That's a tough build, though. Yes, that's a tough... That's a tough, that's a tough build. So, I'll, we will get you the answer on that.
Okay.
Tough build.
I do know they are in their permitting phase, but I don't know if it's pole permits or underground permits. So, I can follow up on that. So, our Phase Three, so, we included all of the homes that we have identified from our August meeting up until now, in addition to the beyond-three-hundred-feet homes that Comcast has been identifying since April's decision. We have identified a total of three-hundred-and-seventy-two homes in this Phase Three. So, these are very newly acquired homes that we have received requests from. Ninety-six of those are gonna be considered as long driveways from Comcast. Eighty-six are projects, meaning communities. And then, we have a hundred and ninety that have been identified from August until now, which Comcast now needs to go out and survey and identify whether or not they are long driveways, or if they're gonna be considered projects with small communities. Excellent. So, I do wanna get through the next couple of slides fairly quickly, 'cause I would like for staff to pop over to the website. So, on our website, we do have a extension map that's interactive in regards to where the public can see where they actually are regarding their home and their status. So, what you would do is you just go to the main page, calvercountymd.gov, and then you would go to the Comcast build-out, which you'd see at the top right-hand corner. Next slide. And then, you would look at the project, G I S map, which our G I S team has done really, really good work with. So, just, this is a screenshot for now, but this is just to show you where, kind of, all these projects are happening throughout the county. And there is a color-code scheme to them, which I can explain once we actually get onto the website. Next slide. And then, this is gonna be a more honed-in picture. So, if you were to click on, say, yourhomes dot, and then it gives you an expanded view of exactly where you are. So, Darryl, if you can actually pop over to the website that we, we can get a live interaction. Thank you. So, you would go to Comcast build-out, and then that's gonna redirect you to the whole page. It's gonna give you a couple of options. What you wanna do is go to the Comcast Service Extension Map, and that's actually going to give you to a, proceed to website. It's an extended, extended website. Now, at first glance, it doesn't look like there's any dots. You do have to zoom in. So, once you zoom in, you can start to see some dots on the map. And, Darryl, if you just don't mind clicking any of those dots. So, if you do click one, so, say that you do reside at that location, you can see that your project or your residence has been identified by us, and the project is pending. So, if you do see that it's red, it means that the project hasn't started, meaning that we more than likely received your request from April until now, and now that we have Comcast in the process of figuring out whether it needs to be surveyed or just extended. So, Darryl, if you could click on, say, a yellow one? So, yellow is in progress, meaning there's actually foot on the ground, whether it be permitting, surveying, designing. So, if you look at this particular location, it has a projected completion date of the first quarter of twenty-twenty-two, with construction status being in the permitting phase. Okay? And then, if you do go throughout the map, you will see, as time goes on, we're gonna get more and more green. We do have some green, and that means completely, completed. So, there are a couple of different phases that you can be in when you're in the in-progress phase. You could be in surveying, meaning Comcast is out there, and they need to survey exactly how far you are off the road, or design phase for projects. So, for Potts Point, they did need to have a design as far as when they would lay, where they would lay lines, if they are laying them underground, for example. Then you would have your construction phase and then completion phase.
So, for a citizen, if you zoom into the map?
Yes.
You zoom in on where your house is, if you don't have a dot, you need to call us.
Correct.
If your dot is green and you don't have cable, you need to call us.
Then that's a problem.
If you're yellow, then...
I will say, thankfully, the, the G I S team has provided me knowledge in order to update this more in real time, so this is pretty much as real time as we can get. So, yes, if there is any errors, then you just need to let us know, and then we can get that corrected.
No. No. She had hands over there for a minute, but I have cable unless they cut me off for not paying the bill.
Yes, and on that same platform on our website that shows where the extension map is, there also, there is also a link to where you can submit questions. And then, my information's also at the end of the slide. So, Darryl, if you could go back to the presentation?
So, the map is great for people that are technology astute, that they can do that. For those that aren't, they just have to make a phone call.
Just make a phone call.
Well, if they don't have internet, they can't look at it.
Yeah. They gotta go to McDonald's, parking lot, or library or something.
Right.
Just so, Darryl, if you could go back to that slide. Just to reiterate, the construction status phases are project identified, which would be a red dot in this scenario, and then survey, design phase, permitting phase, and construction phase. That's all in progress. So, your, your, your house, your home, your, your area is being surveyed and permitted and constructed. And then, your five would be complete, which would be your green dot. Okay, next slide.
Thank you, Ashley. So, Commissioners, this morning, this afternoon, we're requesting, as discussed prior, to reimburse customers that actually made their capital contributions to build the Comcast to their homes between January first and December thirty-first of this year. I'm asking that we, we go ahead and reimburse them, but we set a strict, finite deadline of all of twenty-twenty-one, and after that, we don't go beyond that, because we, we have budgets set aside for this, and we just wanna make sure that we're very clear on the ask here.
Go ahead.
Well, at some point, if someone denies service, we do the road, but Joe Smith says, "I ain't doing it." At some point in the future, the house is sold, somebody else moves in, and they call on cable, we're not paying for that. I mean, this is a one-shot deal.
It's a one-time deal.
Yes. When we come down your road, we'll hook you up for free. If you deny that service, and at some point in the future, a future owner wants service, we're not, this is not retroactive forever, just for people out there listening.
No, and if, if I could echo on that, you know, as, as we're building the Barstow project, some of these other projects, there, there's, there's, you know, for a home that's off the, off, you know, far off from the right-of-way, we're gonna need easements from those homeowners in order to extend service. So, even if they don't want service now...
The infrastructure will be there.
Yeah. But, but, they, they may, they may wanna plan to, to just go ahead and have it run to the house now, just so there's not a question later. 'Cause some of these homes, you know, that could, are, if they're five-hundred, a thousand feet from the right-of-way, it would still be a significant cost for, for a homeowner to come back and, and get that service at a later date.
But just for the public out there to know, this money is coming from a grant, so this isn't costing the taxpayers any money.
Well, some taxpayer somewhere. All of us. It's federal money, so...
Right.
So, we'll make sure, yeah, we'll make sure when we put those notifications out that we remind them in that letter. There's a period of time where this is available, if it's, you don't take it, and we're gonna come, we're gonna give you a recommendation on what that timestamp should be after we get the, an idea of where we are in permitting. And hopefully, in January, we'll have a better idea, but one-time deal.
So, you haven't notified, like, Potts' Point Road is next year. You haven't notified those people, because the stewards last night didn't seem to know that they're getting cable. You know, maybe they forgot, but...
I'm not sure that a letter's gone out. We have spoken with Potts Points in the past.
So, you're not sending letters out to people that aren't gonna get done until twenty-three or the end?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna go out to everyone.
So, it's closer to when it happens is when you're sending out the letter. Because I, I talk about this everywhere I go, and I am surprised that the people say, "Oh, we didn't even know you were doing that." 'Cause we do talk about it, 'cause it is important. But I was just wondering about the notification schedule, but it's closer to when you're getting ready to do it.
Yes, we are, we are actually, we still get some individuals that live in the Barstow area saying that they are interested in service, and I give them the notification that we are actually in process, and the projected date is the, the second quarter. So, we, we will be able to provide the first and second phases, since we do have a more projected concrete completion date, and we'll have C M R send out that, that notification too, as, as well as our office.
So, I just wanna make sure we've used every opportunity to notify people, now's your time to get in line. Hate to see somebody, especially once you've already been there and done it, after you leave, somebody calls, say, "Oops, so..."
So, we, we did do an initial mass notification when we started this project back in April, I believe, when C M R sent out public, you know, press releases and everything. So, we're gonna, I'm gonna have them redo that again. We'll go out on social media again, and to follow up with the letters that Ashley spoke about. Just him, any way we can.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Well, thank you. And as I said bef-, oh, you're not done?
And you do need approval on the expenditures for the cost of reimbursement between January first and December twenty-first.
Chair would entertain a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Okay, second?
Have motion and second that we extend back to January first of twenty-twenty-one reimbursement for all those individuals that had cable installed. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
And I will say, for those individuals that will receive reimbursement, so what's gonna end up happening is Comcast is gonna invoice us, and then Comcast will reimburse. So, there will be some time as far as processing goes.
Won't happen tomorrow, but checks in the mail.
Was that music planned as soon as we voted yes?
Yeah. It was. Somebody in the hallway. So, Chris, once again, if there's any snags you hit or anything, we can help grease a wheel. Don't hesitate. We don't wanna hear SMECO's holding us up, 'cause I'll make a phone call in a heartbeat.
No, 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 I appreciate it. And like I said, Linda, Linda and Ashley have been great to work with, and, you know, if, if there's any county permits that we need help with, they're, they're quick to...
We can't help you with those, 'cause they treat us the same way they treat everybody else.
Well, you can just go online and track them now.
I'd have better luck with SMECO than our own departments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
So, public comment, Mr. County Attorney?
Commissioner, my record, and I apologize if I missed it, I have a motion and a second. I don't know that I had a vote.
I called for a vote.
Did you? Okay.
And it passed.
I don't know if you did.
With one app. I did. I said, "All those in favor, say aye." I think you all were carrying on with Chris.
I didn't hear that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there you go.
Thank you, sir.
Pay attention.
Okay, there is no one on...
I don't remember it either.
Is there anyone in the room that wishes to provide public comment? There's no one on the call, there's no one in the room, Mr. President.
Thank you. Commissioner reports. Commissioner McConkey?
I have nothing this week, sir.
Commissioner Gadway?
I'd like to give kudos and congratulations out to Bayside Baptist Church. Their Transformation Life Center is a great new building, right there off of two-sixty-one, I believe it is. They've really got a nice setup. They, they have actual classrooms upstairs where homeschool students are actually attending. They've got a great gymnasium, auditorium, bathroom and shower facilities there, their food pantry is, is stocked. They're really set to reach out to the community. And with that said, this is a time of year where we all need to remember, we need to reach out into our community with volunteerism and charity. If you have extra, there's a lot of people out there that don't. So, please consider reaching out to charitable organizations in our community, seeing what you can do to help. And in closing, congratulations to Beach Elementary for the groundbreaking. And, other than that, I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. Weems?
No, congratulations to Beach Elementary. I think that...
Three of us were there?
Yes, the three of us were there. Veterans Day ceremony went very well. Thanksgiving is next week, and, you know, it's been a rough twenty, twenty months. And I, I, for one, I, I just ask the citizens to give thanks for all that we do have and all that we will have, and I just wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I wanna also extend condolences to the friends and family of Miss, Mrs. Phyllis Ramsey, who passed. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weems. So, last Thursday, we had a Veterans Memorial Service here at the courthouse. It was the largest attended I've seen since I've been going, and that, they always ask the representatives from all the N J R O T Cs, hopefully I got that right, to speak. And this year was unique, because every one of those individuals were young ladies, which is the first time I'd seen that. And if you hear the comments that they make, and the insight that they have at that age, it does give you hope. As I said that day, going to Eagle Scout ceremonies and Girl Scout Gold ceremonies and hearing those young ladies, it, in this job, it's one of the bright things that we get to do, and gives you hope in our youth and the future of this country, when you hear those individuals and see what they've accomplished at such a young age. And that afternoon, as was mentioned, we went to Chesapeake Beach to break ground for the new elementary school there. I believe it's thirty-seven million dollars, if I'm right. That facility was, gosh, about sixty years old, so...
Nineteen fifty-three.
Nineteen fifty-three. So, it's sixty-eight years old. I can do that math pretty quick. Well, you know, it's time for a new facility there, they're all excited, and it was very well-attended, so we look forward to seeing the new school there, Beach Elementary. And last night, I spoke to the Lions Club in Prince Frederick. It's a very interesting group and informative, and all they wanna do is sign you up to join, because their membership's starting to wane, and I told them I had enough to do. So, unfortunately, I can't be a Lion. Maybe later. But that's all I have. I think we're gonna meet next Tuesday, right? So, we meet next Tuesday? Okay.
Oh, so I was premature.
Well, I was just checking, in case you knew something I didn't. Yeah.
Week thirty.
Yeah, yeah. So, I'll delay my Thanksgiving wishes until next Tuesday, and Commissioner Weems just got a jump.
On the thirty, not next Tuesday, on the thirty?
Oh, not next Tuesday. Well, happy Thanksgiving. Steve was right. I defer. You were right.
As usual, Steve.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Hope you have a great time with family and friends, and if you travel, please be safe. I believe there's a motion, Commissioner Weems? Oh, Commissioner Gadway?
I forgot my weekly. Please, look underneath on YouTube. It says, subscribe. Smash that subscribe button, look over at the bell, hit the bell for notifications when new videos are uploaded, because our community relations people are great. Thank you very much.
We good? What's the goal for today? Get eight more subscribers?
I, I wanted to end the day at five, at five-twenty, and we started the day at five-twelve.
Okay.
So, please, eight more people.
Eight. Okay. Now, Commissioner Weems?
So, how many public comments can we have as Commissioners? We just keep having them? Are we just gonna keep going?
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah.
Just for clarification, are we hit or tickle?
Either or.
Okay. All right. Staff request a motion to enter executive session pursuant to general provisions, Articles, Sections three-dash-three-oh-five-B, one-two, to discuss a personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals; two, three-dash-three-oh-five-B-three, to discuss acquisition of property for a public purpose; and three, three-dash-three-oh-five-B-seven, to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice.
Second?
I have a motion and a second that we go into executive session. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Everyone, have a great day.